Meeting is now being recorded. Thanks.
Thank you. I call the order, the January eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, meeting of the Town Plan and Zoning Commission. Uh, starting off with bills and communications, meeting minutes. May I have a motion?
Move to.
Move to approve by Commissioner Francis.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Le- Levy. Anything, uh, of note, Commissioner Francis? You're on mute.
They looked complete to me.
Commissioner Levy, anything to add?
Nothing. Nothing further.
Yeah, I didn't see anything as well. Anybody else? All those in favor of, uh, accepting the minutes, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, all those opposed, say nay. Any... Having hearing done, um... Vote is adopt, uh, vote minutes are adopted unanimously. Next item. Eleven forty-three, Sasko Hill Road, request of Attorney Chris Russo for ninety-day extension to record final subdivision map.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Jim Went for the record. Um, this site was the subject of a seven-lot subdivision approved by the commission back on July the twenty-seventh. Uh, the first ninety-day extension to record the map was approved on September the twenty-eighth. This would be the second and final ninety-day extension available to the applicant that would bring the, uh, maximum recording date out to April twenty-third of two thousand twenty-one. They indicate they're doing some final work on their engineering before they record the map, so, um, it's a fairly routine request. I have nothing further.
And another right request?
Yes, sir.
May I have a motion?
Jim, just to clarify, that's, um, April twenty-twenty-two, right?
I'm sorry, yes, April twenty-third of two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you. Those errors will happen, at least for me, throughout January. May I have a motion? Commissioner Braun? Move to approve? You're on mute, sorry.
Move to approve.
Commissioner Levy, second?
Yes.
Anything to add? This is upright. No. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions. Passes unanimously. Next item is old business, uh, two-dash-six Beacon Square. This application has been withdrawn. So there's certainly nothing to do with executive session. Mr. Went, should we give a quick background to it, or is it?
Yeah, well, I wa- I wanted to place it on the agenda, um, because we have a pretty broad distribution list of the agenda, so to let public know that it would not be discussed, but as I shared with the commission, and I'll share for any other interested parties at the meeting, is subsequent to our hearing, um, we followed up with the Farm Marshal's Office on some concerns that the commission had raised about access. And it turns out that, um, there was a requirement that had been previously, um, not recognized that would cause the applicant to modify the site plan to provide for turnaround. And because, as you all know, we were time sensitive in this application because it got stuck behind Chick-fil-A, unfortunately, we didn't have any time left in our statutory clock to reopen the public hearing to discuss this, so the applicant, uh, we discussed this with the applicant, and they withdraw, uh, agreed to withdraw the application so they could make whatever changes they need to make to the site plan and essentially start over, so, uh, I expect in the near term that we will see revised application, and we'd have to start the public hearing process anew. Uh, and that was really the only viable option available to us, so that is why this application was withdrawn.
Now, an interesting note to us all, uh, the process works well. Here, one of the commission members reached out to make a confirmation about something that Fire Marshal already looked into, and a second, a second look at it brought about a separate, uh, conclusion, which was very important, so, you know, some, to the extent we ask questions same ti- uh, similar questions, sometimes it actually bears fruit. Uh, process works, so hopefully we'll get a better application. Um, and again, nothing, uh, nothing against the applicant, uh, this was known, this was news to everybody, so.
No, unfortunately, the applicant just didn't have enough time under, under our clock to, uh, to make the adjustment and cha- you know, for us to reopen the hearing, which would have been an option, but we didn't have that availability, so they were good enough to agree, uh, to withdraw, and so we'll re- queue this up again at the appropriate time.
With that, we'll go on to the next, which is twenty-four zero-five Black Rock Turnpike, special exception, special permit application, garage chartery for additions and renovations to convert existing service bays to retail use, and additional gap, gas pump island.
Okay, Jim Went again, Mr. Chairman. Um, this subject parcel is at the intersection of Black Rock Turnpike and Brookside Drive. As you know, there's presently a gas station there with three repair bays on this site. This proposal entails converting the repair bays to retail convenience store and adding a five-hundred-square-foot addition. An additional gas pump island and canopy is also proposed. Um, the underground fuel tank system that's there presently will be completely replaced in the existing fenced enclosure for vehicle storage, uh, will be removed. New landscaping is proposed along the Brookside Drive frontage. The existing curb cuts on Black Rock Turnpike limit the ability for additional landscaping along that street. Total of eighteen parking spaces are proposed to accommodate the required parking for the retail use as well as the gas pump use. Pursuant to section twenty-eight point ten of the regulations, the applicant is seeking, um, your discretion to allow six parking spaces that are perpendicular to Brookside Drive to maintain a five-foot setback from the property line rather than ten feet. The proposed spaces, while they are five feet from the property line, are proposed to be more than twenty feet from the curb line of the street because there's a fairly wide right-of-way there, and they're proposing to landscape that uh, similar to the adjacent property. If you're familiar with this site, the adjacent property on that side of Brookside Drive is the lower level of the Fairfield Woods uh, center that has parking there, and they have a similar parking arrangement with landscaping that this applicant is seeking to emulate. Um, as as previously noted, um, the area between the parking and the street is proposed to be landscaping, I'm sorry, uh, this, the reduction in the setback would also facilitate better vehicular access to this proposed pump island. New concrete curb sidewalk and driveway aprons are required and proposed, and this requirement should be made a condition of approval should this commission support this application. Additionally, the engineering department is recommending that inspection ports be provided for the underground, uh, drainage detention system. Irrelevant standards for your consideration for a special exception are as follows. Number one is the location type, character size, and use of the buildings in harmony with and conform to the appropriate and orderly development of the town and neighborhood, and not hinder or discourage the use of adjacent property. Two is the nature and location of the use of the buildings or structures such that there is adequate access for fire protection. Three are the streets serving the proposed use adequate to carry prospective traffic with provisions made for entering and leaving the property without creating undue traffic hazard or congestion. Or is the proposed use in compliance with the plan of conservation and development? The gas station use does trigger a, um, the special exception, the additions, it triggers a special permit, and those considerations are similar to that of the special exception. Basically, is the development shown on the site and architectural plans of such characters to harmonize with the neighborhood to accomplish a transition in char- to areas of unlike character and property values in the neighborhood. Um, that is all I have at this point, Mr. Chairman. Uh, subject to any questions?
I have a question.
Well, it's, maybe we, might be worth getting a motion on the table, um, and then we can, uh, make, um, let the, uh, dis- excuse me, the discussion going. Uh, Commissioner Harrison?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make a motion to approve it with conditions scaling back the proposal, um, with the removal of the additional pump.
Okay, so move to approve with a condition of approval, remove the additional. You mean the new pump that's being requested?
Correct.
May I have a second? Commissioner Francis, do you second?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Um, is it a quick question, Commissioner Braun, or can I let Commissioner Harrison start?
It's a very quick question for Jim, probably, um. I think, I'm trying to find it in the narrative or in the plans. I thought there were two pump islands initially, and they're adding a third one. Is it, is there a way of clarifying that, so I understand what it was and what they're asking for?
There exists a single pump island that has two gas pumps on it.
Okay.
They are proposing a second island with, uh, additional gas pumps. It'll be two, two pump islands.
Thank you.
Commissioner Harrison, your, your motion, why don't you lead us off in the discussion?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I appreciate that, and, um, I, I, look, I appreciate the applicant coming to us. I understand that the markets do change in terms of demand when it comes to the, um, the bays. But it's a really bad corner, and the applicant, when I asked them how many, you know, what would the anticipated coverage was in terms of traffic, in terms of new customers, with the retail and the deli as a new destination versus retail, with, with, versus uh, repair bays, which don't really demand a lot of traffic. And there was no answer for that, and I have a lot of concerns about the traffic on this corner, which to me is it's pretty tight there. I mean, I, I know that area very well, of town, I li- I used to live in that area, and I, um, traverse this area a lot. And I don't, I need to know that information if I'm gonna make a decision. And that burden I felt was on the applicant, and he didn't provide that information to me when he, um, when I asked for that. Um, so I would like to scale it back a bit, um, and that's the motion I have right now. Thank you.
Commissioner Francis?
I felt exactly the same way. I was gonna move to approve it with a condition of removal of the third pump. I just think it's too much congestion on that site. There are four gas stations within a quarter mile, maybe a half a mile. And the trend, granted, a beginning trend is towards battery. I mean, it's not towards gasoline, it's a way, that I'd rather just see two pumps, two islands with two pumps each, and I think it would lead, I, I think you're gonna find the sandwich stand is gonna get a lot of business, and it would lead to better traffic flow on the site if it were just a two-bay pump, two pump island. So I concur with her condition. And that's the reason.
Commissioner Braun?
I concur with, uh, both the prior commissioners' position. I almost would rather have, and I don't know if this is possible, one longer island where you could have six instead of two separate ones where you would ha- or where you would have eight? Yeah, two on each one. Um, because I don't see how the traffic's gonna move around on that small space. When you go around town, it seems like the gas stations that have more pumps have a lar- have a larger space where it's not on a weird intersection. Um, and that's, that's a concern, especially if you're gonna expand, um, the retail use of the building.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Levy? You're on mute. You know.
Uh, looking at the plans and recalling the testimony, I believe the addition of the pump and the concern about traffic was adequately addressed. Uh, this particular plan, and, you know, if I were to move to a, you know, submit a motion to approve, it would be with the allowance of the, uh, five-foot set- setback instead of the ten, which actually expands the, uh, um, and with the landscaping and so forth, uh, in- increases and expands the available area for traffic flow. Uh, yes, it is a corner, um, with access both on, uh, Brookside there and Black Rock Turnpike, but it's an existing use. Um, having an additional bay or pumps, uh, it's gone through, uh, the various, uh, town inspections and so forth, and uh, the, I felt that the testimony and the application were sufficiently addressed any concerns about the traffic flow on the property. In addition, I think, you know, with the additional landscaping and so forth, and the, uh, uh, improvements to the building, it would be a positive, uh, you know, addition, uh, to the general, um, you know, look and, uh, use of the property. And for us to suddenly try and second-guess this application, you know, which could have a significant impact on the commercial viability of the expansion, um, I don't see it's warranted. I think the evidence was sufficient, uh, to permit, um, permit us to conclude and to recognize uh, that there would be adequate and safe traffic flow on the property. Um, and I would oppose any limitation, uh, or this limitation on, uh, the addition of the, uh, pumps uh, and would rather support one which allowed for the, uh, additional development, but with the additional landscaping and so forth, the five-foot setback to increase the, uh, uh, traffic, uh, you know, flow on the property, and the other conditions as far as getting sidewalks and, uh, the inspection ports. But I would oppose the, uh, proposed limitation on this, uh, what it, what seems to be an appropriate commercial, you know, accommodation for the, uh, uh, expansion and improvements that the developer is considering.
Uh, I'm gonna have Commissioner Bremen, and then I'll let Commissioner Harrison jump back in.
I agree with Commissioner Levy. This is an existing commercial use, um, in a commercial area, and I didn't see any evidence in the record that, uh, the incremental addition of a, a, a new pump island internal to the site um, would cause the type of undue traffic congestion that would allow us to deny the special permit that, that's requesting. Um, I, I think that, uh, you know, the testimony and the, the discussion about, uh, circulation, uh, on site, especially, uh, with the addition of the, um, you know, the five-foot, uh, setback instead of ten-foot, which I, I am in agreement with. Um, i- is adequate both for, you know, the internal, um, circulation and also for, uh, the movement of, of traffic in and out, um, you know, based on my review of the site plan. Um, and I, I don't think, uh, that there was, uh, an indication that there would be, you know, undue traffic congestion or any sort of hazard to traffic, um, based on this addition of the pump island, so that if we are, uh, in agreement with al- allowing the renovation of this existing use, I don't see a basis to deny, um, the, the addition of the pump island, the additional pump island.
Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, no, thank you, and I, I respectfully disagree with, uh, Commissioners Levy and Braunman. I, I don't think the traffic conditions were adequately addressed. Quite frankly, when you, when there is a different type of traffic versus food versus a, um, a repair bay, that's just different. We have no idea what we can anticipate. Uh, I know, I, I, and I did a lot of research the last ten days or so, going around different gas stations, and these delis that, that have conven- these gas stations rather that have convenience stores, there is a lot of traffic. There's a lot of things that we just don't know with this, and I, and I don't feel comfortable when you change something like this, and we are changing it essentially, going from, um, you know, a, a, a repair bay to a retail store and additional pump, there's gonna be, uh, there's gonna be new traffic. Do I know how much? I do not, but if, but if the applicant provided that information, that would've been helpful, and that would've perhaps changed my, my decision. Thank you.
I have some thoughts, um, but, uh, does any other commissioners want to jump in? Um, Mr. Went, just quickly from my own, because I thought I had it, uh, understood, and I just wanna make sure I, I am correct. The, the existing, uh, there's an existing island with three pumps, I assume on each side, correct?
There's an existing island that presently has two pumps. You can go to either side of that island, but there's two pumps. The, the, the proposed additional island has three additional pumps.
Okay, so you could have potentially ten cars there for the new spots, as I understand it.
Correct.
Okay. And I s- I believe this is correct, but this condition of approval, um, should it pass based on traffic condition, uh, congestion, would be, would that be in your mind appropriate use of our, uh, description? Would that be appropriate condition of approval?
Uh, yes, I, I think, yes, as I, the standards that, that I laid out, um, both for the special exception and the special permit, need to, you need to be satisfied that the application has met the test, that it won't result in undue, um, traffic congestion. And so it's up to the commission to decide whether or not, um, you know, the applicant has met that test, so, yes.
No, I think that's, I, I, I agree with you. I just wanted to ask you directly for the, even just for the record. Um, it's the, it's just not any, it's not something we have done in the past. We certainly use conditions of approval. We certainly scale projects back. This is a little different, but I agree that it's, it makes this burden as well. Um, I do though, agree, agree with, uh, Commissioners, uh, Bremen and, uh, Levy. I believe the record is adequate, that there is sufficient, there's sufficient evidence in the record that there was not caused undue traffic congestion. The evidence of traffic, I think, was certainly presented to us, um, traffic report in its own right, was that Commissioner Went, uh, Commissioner Went, excuse me, Mr. Went, a, uh, a traffic report was submitted, I believe, right? Or was it basically testimony?
Sorry, having trouble. There, there was not an, an independent traffic study submitted as part of this application.
No, there wasn't, okay, so... Okay, then I, I take that back. I was getting it confused with other ones as well. Um... Nope, okay. I take that back. I thought there was a traffic, a traffic report that was submitted that, uh, provided the evidence that we needed. Commissioners either Brock, uh, Bremen or Levy, um, if you can help me out, I mean, uh, if you don't mind me asking directly, what the evidence you, you would rely upon for this? Because I, I, I thought there was a traffic report myself, but I'm just gonna get confused with, uh, I think two-point-two-six Beacon Square. Go ahead, Ms. Com- Commissioner Levy, thank you.
Yeah, um. I mean, in terms of the issue of traffic congestion, to my mind, that's an, the question of whether or not it's gonna cause undue, uh, traffic on the public highways. Uh, we're not concerned, I mean, there were concerns about, uh, safely navigating the site, but that's not the traffic congestion that, uh, we're looking at. And in terms of, uh, Black Rock Turnpike being a major state highway, uh, the intersection being controlled by a traffic control signal, uh, and the fact that, uh, you know, that area has, uh, you know, um, traditionally been used for a, uh, service station. It's not a new use. And I would question whether or not having additional pumps is gonna substantially increase the demand for getting gas at this particular site. Uh, there, I think there's a gas station across the street, there's one just down the hill. Um, there are three gas stations right in close proximity. There's one also at the intersection of Stillson and Black Rock Turnpike. Uh, so there's plenty of options to get gas, and just based upon the existing use for many years, uh, the fact that it's on a state highway, which is four lanes across, that there's a traffic control at the intersection, uh, I think, uh, we would be stretching it to, uh, try and limit this based on concern that having an extra two or three pumps is going to alter the traffic use and, uh, you know, congestion at the intersection and upon Black Rock Turnpike. So my, my reliance is upon the longstanding use of the property, my familiarity with the inner area, and the fact that there are so many gas stations there that, uh, I'd be surprised if this had much of any impact upon the general traffic congestion.
And Commissioner Levy, you bring up an interesting point, um, that was, I, I had not, uh, it was a little tangential, what I was thinking as well. If we remove a pump, I mean, one of the sites, I think Commissioner Harrison, and I'll turn it to you since it's more directed towards you. I understand your point that removing a pump may scale back, is, is scaling back the project. But if your concern is that there's, we're expanding a convenience store and adding a deli, will removing the pump scale back the project sufficiently in your mind? I mean, you're taking away gas, you're cer- certainly taking away gas pumps. But is it affecting the, the use that I think you're probably having an issue with, which is the additional convenience and the deli?
Um, Mr. Chairman, that's where, that's, you're asking me?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, so, I mean, obviously, I'm not an expert on the site, but I understand that they already have some sort of small, very small convenience store. Um... Look, I, I think there are a lot of unknowns here, and I, I don't think the applicant did a sufficient job of presenting a lot of good evidence to, to, to help us render really smart and educated decisions, so...
No, and that's, and that's a fine, that's a fair point. Um, especially with the, you know, the, normally you have a traffic report, you don't need one.
There's no traffic report. There's really nothing to base our decision. I, I, I feel like this, bas- basically, there's a lot of unknowns here. I don't like to make decisions based on unknowns, and I, and I thi- I wish the applicant did a better job, because it would be something I would love to, you know, approve, but there's just not enough good information here.
But we're still, I mean, you're still thinking of approval, though, with the, the condition as is.
I'm trying to find the compromise that helps, you know, all parties. I don't wanna just say no, just to say no. I, 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 I just wanna find, um...
Well, let me ask you this, and I'll, I'll, if you don't mind me interrupting you, I apologize.
No.
Um, if the concern is a lack of information that may or may not be provided in a traffic report, is it worth denying without prejudice? So they have, they can come back to us potentially with the same application, but with a traffic report, may, or at least evidence to, that will, may or may not persuade you, but at least a traffic report, or uh, maybe a new site plan, whatever they decide?
Yeah, it may or may not persuade me, but I think more information is always really helpful for this commission, and I would be amenable to putting forth the, um, a motion to, 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 without prejudice.
Because my concern is if, and I'll get to you, I see Commissioner, uh, Francis and then Commissioner, uh, Braun. My concern is if the, if your concern is there's a lack of information um, about how this is gonna affect the project, we're both gonna approve it even with that lack of information, expanding the commercial, the retail, and having the deli, but not giving them the the extra pump, which, as Commissioner Levy said rightfully, could very well affect the feasibility of it, but we're still, even when you're saying we don't have enough information, we're still potentially in your mind stepping.
I don't know about the feasibility. I don't know, or I do, you know, like, there's just not enough information to, to provide with that.
I mean, I'll get, and Commissioner Francis, you're up next. I mean, my thought is, um, even without the traffic report, I do agree with, uh, Commissioner Levy and Bremen that I think that, knowing the area, knowing what it's used for, the commercial aspect of it, there's sufficient parking, uh, that this, uh, with the the internal, um, design as it is, going to a five-foot setback, which I believe is appropriate in this instance, um, that there is enough for us to approve it. Um, if you're asking, if you're saying, hey, I just, you know, maybe denial without prejudice to get some more information, you know, we, I think that's, that's an interesting thought, too. I'd be curious to have, hear what other commissioners, Commissioner Levy and Bremen particularly, who spoke about approving it without conditions, would have to stay on that. Um, but my initial, not my initial, my position, I think, is that approval without conditions is appropriate and warranted in this instance. Commissioner Francis?
Um, yes, my, my concern, I don't think a traffic report is really going to help, because what they're doing is adding, they have four pumps and they're going, want to add six. And I approve of their adding four, but not six. And they're going to do a rather large sandwich business, which I, I think might be heavily used. And you can't really do it, the traffic isn't that bad at that site. And you can't really, it's more than doubling your gas capacity plus adding a whole retail lunch function, snack, sandwich shop, and I, it snack, sandwich shop. I it will be pretty heavily used. And I think that's why I just would like to see four additional pumps and not six because I think the sandwich shop is going to be busy and the gas will also, the even doubling the number of gas pumps will increase business.
But the there's no addition, as I understand Commissioner Harrison's motion as it stands, it's they're just gonna, it's going to be approving the building at least, but only allowing the existing two pumps, not expanding it to the extra.
No, I think she wanted to do, they they have two four pumps, two pumps on each side, used on each side, and they want to do three more, which would be six more cars. And I think it's too much jockeying of cars with the sandwich shop. So they would get everything they're asking for except a third pump. And you did not.
I'm missing, I feel like I misunderstood.
You didn't mean to eliminate the whole pump, did you, Commissioner?
Commissioner Harrison, let's just.
Can we just be really clear on how many pumps that we're having here? Like, I just want to be super clear on the record.
Perhaps if we could address just the number of islands, wasn't that?
Islands, yeah.
Being two islands as opposed to one island.
Okay.
I just want to be super clear on that, too.
No, I know, and that's why I I felt there was a disconnect and I wanted to address it. But your.
Can I bring up the site plan?
Yeah, that would be helpful. The reality is, this is a very tight space. I've gone there. We've all gone there, I'm sure. I don't think it could accommodate an extra pump and a retail sandwich shop. I think it's a very tight space. I think it's asking a lot. You can't put 20 pounds of potatoes in a 10-pound bag. That's a reality of it. I'm sorry.
Well, your motion is to allow the building to, the allow the building additions, the retail space and the
Correct.
deli, but not add the new island.
Correct.
Just allow them the existing island.
Correct.
Okay. Commissioner, because I, Mr. Francis, when you just.
My second wasn't quite for that, but.
Okay, so you understand she Commissioner Harrison is not is take is not allowing them the second island. It sounded as if you would be amenable to that, but would it? So I just want to make sure we're all clear as to what's going on.
Yes, I I would amend, I would allow a second island, just of two pumps, meaning four cars.
Okay. Commissioner Braun, you've been waiting, I know.
I'm I'm still unclear on pumps and islands. Right now, there's one island with four with capacity of four vehicles, two on each side of, two pumps, two cars on each side.
Correct.
Now, if you had a second one, wouldn't that be eight cars total as opposed to, I've heard 10?
So the second island, the proposed new island, would have three pumps, capacity six cars.
And you'd retain the old island also?
Correct.
You'd have ten?
Ten cars total, two islands, four cars on the existing, six on the new.
That seems, yeah, so you're adding capacity of six car, yeah, okay. Now I understand that better. Yeah, I would like.
No, that's important.
Yeah. Not just a traffic study, but a congestion study, something about where the car is coming from and going to, how are they getting in and out? And how are they all going to fit in here when people are also driving in to get sandwiches?
Well, I think in this.
I would like to have more information. I think the burden's on the applicant to provide the information, and I would like to have more information, either deny without prejudice or approve with this condition of reducing it, and maybe that's without prejudice also. Thanks. Commissioner Levy?
I'm not aware of any modern gas station in this town that has less than two islands to start with. And perhaps with Commissioner Harrison's concurrence, we might substitute a motion which would be as follows, which would be to approve the application as it stands with the five-foot setback allowance with the proposed landscaping, have a condition for curbside and sidewalks, and also for inspection ports. With the understanding that if that if that motion is not approved, that the dial would be without prejudice for them to come back with either a traffic study or further information regarding the pumps. I think that would.
I'm not sure, I mean, I'm not sure I follow that. I apologize. Are you going to amend the motion?
Would be to substitute a motion basically to approve, but as a part of the motion that any that if it's not carried, that it would be a denial without prejudice. Or subject to further motion with conditions, I guess.
Oh, I see. So you're you're concerned, okay, you want, you like the motion kind of as is with the conditions that you just said, but if it's denied, it's not denied with prejudice, it's denied without prejudice.
Right.
You want that, I see, okay, I understand.
The motion would be, however, to approve the application as submitted and not with conditions.
No, I think I think it's, I think any motion at this point, regardless, wherever our vote is, the denial would have to be without prejudice at this point. So I think that's where, if I'm hearing enough people, that's where people are leaning at the very least to come back with more information.
Yeah, my my concern is whenever you have a motion, either if the motion is to deny, which if grant, you know, if denied does not mean you approve. I mean, it should always be a motion to approve or a motion with conditions, but not.
No, I know. Well, we've, I I don't, we've had discussions about the not motions to deny.
That's not always true, actually.
Yeah, we've gone, we, it's okay.
We're going around on that.
We've done enough motions for denial in here, and I I understand his point, but I don't think it's something we, not something I'll follow, at least, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Respectfully. Your thoughts, though, on just a simple, instead of substituting, as you said, a motion to approve, which I'm not sure, with all the conditions you stated, which I'm not sure Commissioner Harrison's on board with, about just a denial without prejudice, as I suggested a while back? Or do you want to move forward with the votes?
There's one motion on the table, right?
There is, I'm trying to.
I would have to withdraw that motion and.
Well, of course. No, no, your motion's not being withdrawn. I'm trying to, trying to glean information from what their positions are. As I said, I think I I I am leaning, I am leaning towards a motion to approve, as Commissioner Levy had suggested, which obviously is not on the table. So I my alternative was, if more information is requested, my concern is this, the island removal, I'm not sure addresses the concern that you have because you still have the uncertainty of deli and the convenience store. You're still taking somewhat of a blind step forward. And my concern is that if really if you're seeking information, more information from the applicant, that may be better addressed in a motion to deny without prejudice as opposed to taking in their application and cutting it up a little bit. Commissioner Bremen?
Well, I I see at least three different possibilities. Let me try to break them down. I I think we're moving close to some sort of consensus, although it may not seem like that. So I I first of all, I think as a legal matter, essentially, any denial of a special permit application is without prejudice in the sense that the applicant, having heard the commission's concerns, can resubmit a new application. And I think that, you know, here, I I am not in favor of a denial, you know, whether we state that it's with or without prejudice. I don't think we can deny anything with prejudice in the sense that it can never be resubmitted to us. But I would not be in favor of denying without prejudice for the purpose of getting a traffic report because I think the incremental difference between a site plan with, you know, five pumps versus four pumps versus two pumps is not the type of granularity that we can address with a traffic report. Traffic reports deal with, okay, this is a use that's going to generate a certain amount of trips, right, a hotel, for example. The traffic report is not going to tell us, well, this is the number of trips that's going to be generated by this number of pumps, right? So I I I am not in favor of us, you know, asking for a traffic report that's a foregone conclusion. The traffic report is going to say, this site is going to generate the same amount of traffic with, you know, 10 cars accessing the pumps as with eight, right? So in in terms of, you know, whether we can reach a consensus as a commission, which we may not be able to, the the other two alternatives that were presented were to to approve the site plan as proposed with the conditions as stated by staff, including using our discretion to allow more maneuverability on the site with the, you know, five-foot setback. That is possi possibility that I'm in favor of, and I've heard, you know, Commissioner Levy and and the the chair also in favor of that. But there is an alternative proposal by Commissioner Francis also to approve it with the condition that one of the pumps on the new island be removed, which has has some merit to it, and perhaps if there is not consensus to approve the application, then we could agree on an amended motion that would reduce the the new island by one pump, which would perhaps alleviate some of the concerns that have been expressed by by several commissioners.
Well, then, to be fair, the fourth option is the motion that's on the table.
Can I say something, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, that's what I was, you were going next.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I I never asked for a traffic study. I asked, I asked the applicant two weeks ago. I asked, what are your business plan? What do you think the anticipated new customers are based on adding an additional pump and adding a deli to your premises? They didn't have an answer, okay? I never asked for a traffic study, just to be clear for the record.
No, you you have been, that's true. We always jump to.
I just want to be very clear on that. There there seems to, Mr. Braun just brought up a traffic study, and I've also done investigative work on my own, right, in the last 10 days. I'm not sure how many gas stations Mr. Levy has 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 been to, but I've been to many in the last week. And there's ample space at most at most gas stations in Fairfield for a deli slash convenience store and additional pumps. I don't think this space really allows for that. And I am concerned about the the public safety. That's why I'm bringing this up. Look, I I I want the the owner to do well, you know, this is against him, but I really feel like there are issues there that have not been addressed by the applicant.
Thank you. Commissioner Levy, any other points? And then I I think it's.
Procedurally, I think the applicant's entitled to, at some point, a vote on the application, so even if the motion on the table is denied because people oppose the restriction, that it should be followed with a motion or it should be permitted to have a follow-up motion addressing the application itself.
No, and that's my, I was gonna, as soon as everybody had their, what they needed to say, I was going to turn to more of the procedural for Mr. Went is, should we essentially addressing that? So unless any other commission members have any thoughts, I was going to just ask Mr. Went to proceed this procedural question, how to move forward.
Well, you've got a motion on the table to approve with conditions. If typically, if a motion to approve fails, then the motion, then the application is denied. If, so if if what I'm hearing is if there are.
The question, the problem is we're dealing with conditions.
Right.
And the question, I guess, is, do we vote on what's the motion that's in front of us? Because I I agree, that's what usually if you deny a motion a motion to approve, even with conditions, we've normally addressed it as a denial. We can either do it as Mr. Levy suggested, that a motion to approve with these conditions, really, we all recognize this turning on the conditions, that if we deny it, we need to vote on the application itself, or we have an actual secondary kind of supplement motion on the conditions themselves. Which I'm not sure is any cleaner. I'm just, I'm not really sure the procedure.
No, I I understand what you're saying, that is, if if the majority of the commission does not support the commission, you don't, the conditions as proposed, you don't want the application to default into a denial. You'd want a subsequent motion to either to articulate different conditions that were not supported by the majority of the commission. Is that what I understand you saying?
Yes, I think that's it. I mean, I think I threw out the denial without prejudice. And the reason I threw without prejudice is because I thought there was a timeline that would be.
No, I I agree with with Commissioner Bremen. So this is not an application like a zone change, for example, that if it's denied, they're time barred unless there's a significant difference. A a denial or denial of prejudice in this case, I think, doesn't make a difference in that I agree that if it's articulated why the application didn't wasn't approved, they have an opportunity to submit a revised application.
I always had the the timeline conditions in my mind, so thank you for that, at least. But back to the main point about moving forward with this. I I mean, I think you can do it either way. I think it might be cleaner making the motion with the conditions stated, with the understanding that if it doesn't pass, a motion to approve without conditions, or at least the conditions that have been expressed by Commissioner Levy, staff, the recommendation, excuse me, the conditions of approval by staff would be coming afterwards. I think that's if that would happen.
I I understand what you're saying. I think if there's general support to approve an application, either with conditions or or a list of conditions as being offered by this motion, I think you can vote separately on the conditions that this motion entails, and if that receives a majority, then the application is approved with those conditions. If if
Okay.
if if a motion does, for these particular conditions as offered, is not supported by a majority of the commission, then I think there could be a supplementary motion.
Okay, so why don't we do that? Make it easy. I think that's cleaner than the second route that I had suggested. Okay.
But before you do that, however, I just have a clarifying question. As I as I understand the motion that's made, it's to approve this application on the condition that the existing pump island not be approved. Is that?
Correct.
Is that correct? And I, but I didn't hear anything, and I'm not trying to, I just want to make sure the the mixing up whether or not this motion would also include the conditions that we recommended and whether or not there's support in this particular motion for the reduction in the parking setback.
Commissioner Harrison, I think that's going to be directed to you. Do you understand? When Mr. Went's had, gave an introductory to this, he had staff recommendations that he can list again if you like, but also we have the discretion to reduce the setback from 10 feet to five feet in this to allow essentially greater parking lot air, not parking lot, but a larger site, interior site for them to maneuver. So do you, and we're not, he is not, nor am I recommending, suggesting that you do anything, but do you, did you envision, though, your motion to include those aspects in any way?
No, full disclosure, no, it it did not.
Okay, and that's fine. I mean, that's, why don't we, why don't we do this? Why don't we move? Because the big thing is going to be the the second island. I think that's the clear kind of, yes, Commissioner Levy?
I just have a question. When we say existing island, is it to not allow an additional island or not to allow the use of the existing island? So.
It's the additional island, correct, Commissioner Harrison?
Correct.
Fine, thank you.
Commissioner Braun, Bremen, excuse me.
Yeah, what is one more point of clarification? So the motion was for the condition of approval to not allow the the new island at all.
The new island.
Yes, but then the second, the second by Commissioner Francis was to allow the new island, but to reduce it to two pumps from three.
Well, she seconded the motion.
Yeah, I seconded the motion. I didn't.
Seconded the motion, I think, did not fully under.
See.
Did not understand it, but now does, and I don't, I think her second still stands.
Okay.
If that's true, Commissioner Francis?
I don't know, because I do favor the allowing the additional island. I just don't favor the third pump on the island.
Well, why don't we do that?
How do you withdraw the, how do you withdraw a second? I don't understand that.
I I can't. I did it. But I.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we make the vote on the motion as it stands now? And regardless of the outcome, we'll probably have a supplemental motion, because if it's grant, if it's approved, I do want us to discuss staff recommendations and the and the the sight back sightline discretion that we have. and the dis- and the the site back, sightline discretion that we have. If it's, if it's do not, if it's not passed, then we will have another supplemental motion on the application and others. I I think we need to make this, bring this to a head, and it may not be the cleanest, it may not be the cleanest way, but I think it's a way. Unless there's any major objections.
Just they need to be very clear on what the motion is and what the second is.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, yep, I'm gonna do it right now. Okay, so the motion on the table is a motion to approve the application with the condition that the new island not be allowed. Is that, that's, somebody disagree with me if I said it wrong, but that's as I understand it. So again, the motion is to approve the application with the condition of approval that the new island, new gas pump island, is not allowed. So all those in favor, please raise your hand. Or say aye. Commissioner Harrison, Commissioner Braun. All those opposed, please raise your hand. Commissioners Noonan, Ford, Levy, Bremen. Uh, all those abstain, any abstain, ah, any abstain? Commissioner Francis, I missed your, did you vote? I missed it if you did. Which, which way? You're on, you're on mute. I'm sorry. I don't think it matters, but.
With the four, with the four commissioners, so.
You voted opposed, okay. So Commissioner Francis opposed, so five to the the uh, the motion as on the table does not pass. Now, having in line of what I said, is there, we have a a sup- a secondary motion? Commissioner Levy?
Yes, I would have moved to approve the application uh to allow the uh fi- five-foot setback from the property uh to have a condition that there be new concrete curbs, sideways, sidewalks, driveway aprons, and uh inspection ports as recommended by engineering.
And the dis- if you missed the discretion, the setback?
Yeah, I said, yeah, to allow the five-foot setback.
Okay, and if you said it, I missed it, I apologize. Okay. So those are the motion to approve with, I believe, the conditions stated by staff and using our discretion for the five-foot setback. I don't believe there's any other conditions you at, you put in there that was different than staff. Is that true?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second? Commissioner Bremen? Okay. So I, normally, we go, I don't think we need to go through it again unless um, I'm happy, and I don't want to stifle any conversation. I feel like we probably addressed this applica- this motion in the previous one, but Commissioner Levy, I saw you, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to make clear the concrete curb sidewalk to driveway. I don't know if that was necessarily staff or a condition that was recommended in general.
Thank you, yes. Thank you for that. Yeah, as I said, I mean, I I believe um, I I support this application. I do believe it meets the the elements for both the special permit and the special exception. Um, I recognize the dissent, um. I'm, you know, respectfully just disagree. Commissioner Francis? And Commissioner Ford?
The motion on the floor is for the I, the not island, but with three pumps.
Correct. So it's the application as is with respect to the islands.
Okay.
Commissioner Ford?
Yeah, I I support the motion. Uh, the the property reminds me a lot of the gas station on the corner of Fairfield Woods Road and Stratfield Road. In fact, I think it probably has a little more um square footage. And the, and then there's two pumps there. Um, and I I think we should anticipate a similar application coming from that property, because those, that property is not doing um work on cars any anymore either. Um, so I, you know, I I I would tend to agree with the Commissioner Francis. Um, limit the pumps, but I I could, I I I can be persuaded to to approve it as submitted as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Francis? You're on mute.
The reason I would recommend and vote for, have to vote against this, which really I favor basically, is I think two, the two pumps would allow for better traffic flow on the site. It's a small congested site. It's busy, and I think the lunch, the deli business is gonna be pretty swift. And there'll be a lot of congestion. And then people, some people think it's all right to leave their car at the gas pump and go in and do this, that, and the other, right? It's very strange. But I just think it's a congested site, and I would prefer that they had the two islands with two pumps, and it would be better. But that means having to vote against this.
Commissioner Levy?
Uh, I'm not really sure I understand why three pumps or two pumps would make, if anything, having three pumps, you'll get people getting gas sooner and be in and out of the place in less time. If you've got one less pump, you're gonna have a line. It's gonna take longer. So it's actually contradictory, I think.
The jockeying that's gonna go on with three pumps, you know, a middle pump. Two works well, three doesn't.
Okay. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Ford, did we lose you, or you just lose video?
Think I'm here.
Okay, you're, okay. We lost you for a quick second, so. Or unless anybody else, I was gonna uh put this to the vote. Uh, does anybody, does anybody want me to repeat the motion, or does anybody understand the motion we're voting on? I'm gonna assume silence is that's everybody understands. Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Commissioners Noonan, Ford, Levy, and Bremen. All those opposed? Commissioners Harrison, Francis, and Braun. Motion passes for three. Thank you for, thank you for a very robust discussion. Um, this work, this works out as it should, uh, at least with um the discussion and working things out, regardless of the outcome. So I thank you, everybody, for your um, your comments, your thoughtful insight, uh, civility as well, and professionalism. Thank you. Um, we pulled the agenda, excuse me. That ends old business onto compliances. Twelve fifteen Post Road, application of Nichols M.D. of Fairfield to establish a medical office in a portion of an existing building, the Center Business, Zenner Design District. Mr. Wend?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this uh subject property is part of the Brickwalk complex, uh, and this tenant space was originally occupied by Trek Bicycles. It's next to Malta, if you're familiar with that particular building in the Brickwalk, most recently occupied by retail space known as BD Provisions. This application seeks to change the use from retail to medical office. That medical use is permitted, and the change would require four additional parking spaces. The the parking tabulation on the site plan is a very detailed um kind of history on the parking drawdown uh on this complex. In yields that at present, there is, there are seven surplus parking spaces. Therefore, the required additional spaces are available and reduce the current surplus parking spaces from seven to three. Uh, I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
May I have a motion, please? Commissioner Levy? Uh, move to approve, you're on mute.
Move to approve?
Thank you. You have a second? Is there a second? Commissioner Ford? Seconds? Commissioner Levy?
Yeah, it's a permitted use, uh, you know, uh, it's a large space. Um, I don't think it'll uh present any concerns in terms of traffic. Uh, there's other medical uses within the property. It's consistent with the general character of the Brickwalk area, uh, where there's both dental offices, spas, dermatological uses. Uh, so based upon that, it being a permitted use, I would approve it.
Commissioner, Commissioner Ford, excuse me?
Yeah, I have nothing further. I I would approve it.
Yeah, in my mind, uh, as I understand it, complies with our regulations. Any other commissioners have input? Ready for a vote? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. Extensions passes, look, pass unanimously. Next application is fifty-six Sasko Hill Road Coastal Site Plan Application of Steve Susick regarding demolition and reconstruction of a single-family dwelling. Mr. Wend?
Hi, I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually uh do this one.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Sorry.
Um, for this um application at fifty-six Sasko Hill Road, um, it's required to have a coastal site plan review because it's within a hundred feet of um, the ti- the tidally influenced portion of the Mill River. Um, and this um application was referred out to uh the D E P, the um for both coastal site plan review as well as uh for uh natural diversity database review. Um, for the natural diversity database review, there were no additional comments. There were, there weren't any um mitigation measures that were recommended by the D E P staff for that. And in terms of the state D E P, um, they did recommend a reduction in some of the regrading that was proposed on uh the site improvement plan, so we have had conversations with the applicant on that. Um, as was stated in your summary, I mean, this is a um basically almost a full demolition of what's there with the exception of allowing for some, some portions of the existing foundation to remain, and then the entire single-family structure is gonna be uh reconstructed. Um, the prior rate, single-family uh structure didn't have any onsite retention. So um this application proposes onsite retention. So there was a bit of regrading that was in conjunction with that system. Uh, we've consulted with our engineering department, who agrees with us that we can reduce some of the regrading, especially in the rear of the property, in just uh repositioning some of those underground onsite retention systems so that we can pull back some of those grading contours that are shown on the site. So what we're asking for the commission to do is to um, if you, if you see fit to approve this, we'd ask you to please um approve it with the following recommendations for commission, for conditions. Uh, one of which is that the plantings would need to be installed and maintained in accordance with uh the coastal planting plan that's been provided. Uh, we also would like to see the utilities room shown on the site improvement plan to be elevated to elevation eleven in um compliance with um FEMA standards and our Fairfield um flood uh protection regulations. And then also revising the orientation of the onsite retention infrastructure underneath the existing patio to limit proposed grading beyond the rear of the structure. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Hargan. May I have a motion?
Motion approved.
I think, uh, Commissioner Ford was.
Yeah, I think he beat you to the punch. Commissioner Ford?
Motion approved.
With the conditions stated by staff?
That's correct.
Okay, motion approved with conditions stated by staff. Second, Mr. Commissioner Bremen, yeah. Any other, any comments, Commissioner Ford?
No, no, it, well, just the um, no, no comments, nope.
Uh, Commissioner Braun, I see your hand up. Go ahead. Oh, sorry. The the plans that we're approving, do they, they don't have, obviously, these are conditions of approval, so they would have to submit revised plans to show that there's less regrading than would be required um under these plans, it to go along with the D E P rep- D E P recommendation? And who, how do we review that, the revised plans to have, that has less regrading?
I I can answer that, Mr. Chairman, Jim Wend. It's it's the, it's not a complicated thing. They're showing a um, some underground detention waterward of the existing patio that's perpen- you know, that's laid out perpendicular. They can rearrange how that lays out, so it's more parallel to the patio, and some of it being under the patio, so that the fill over the top of that is not required. I I, in my opinion, I think that's a fairly de minimis change that we would require. The answer to your question is, yes, it would require revised site plan to be submitted before we issue the permit for them to proceed. But it would be our recommendation that that's a fairly minor change that we would handle administratively rather than having it come back on an agenda before the commission.
And I, I don't see conservation reviewing it aside from saying there's no inland wetlands, but the Conservation Department and the Conservation Commission not acting as inland wetlands agency does provide guidance on all manner of natural resources. And they were instrumental in the exide cleanup, for example, not just the inland wetlands agency, but the Conservation Commission acting as the Conservation Commission. Um, so I would really like to see them provide a little additional guidance on anything that relates to, especially in the vicinity of Mill River, which we just spent, you know, thirty years trying to clean up, finally cleaned up. I know this is a small project, but is it possible we can have a conservation department and or a conservation commission see if they like this, or if they think there should be additional buffer or plantings or anything like that so close to the river?
If, if I could clarify, um Conservation Department staff, um, they have reviewed this and indicated that they don't have jurisdiction. This is title. So it's actually um, it's actually our jurisdiction within the Coastal Management Act. So um, they they did not take jurisdiction on this application.
Yeah, I'm I'm not challenging that at all. I understand that acting as inland wetlands agency, they don't have regulatory jurisdiction, because that's only over inland wetlands, which are not title wetlands. I understand that, but the Conservation Department and the Conservation Commission do provide guidance, not in a regulatory capacity, to other departments and other commissions, as, and they always have. I feel like this is in their, you know, area of expertise, just like engineering can weigh in, or any other department can weigh in. I would like to have their guidance, especially with the lengthy um process of cleaning up Mill River up upstream from here. And the fact that, you know, conservation is involved in coastal air, coastal projects such as marsh restoration. So they do do a lot of work in the coastal area, not in a regulatory capacity, but in a natural resource capacity and a guidance capacity. So I would like to hear from them to see if they have any further input, perhaps further conditions of approval. Well, as Ms. Hargan said, it was presented to them, and you know, obviously, they declined with the jurisdiction. Your point is noted, Commissioner Braun, I understand you're not making a jurisdictional point, but it's hard to go back to an agency and uh that's already made it a, made it a, made a uh statement on it and demanded, I think, at this point, um, especially we have the compliance in front of us at this point. Um, Commissioner Bremen?
Uh, I just wanted to ask Ms. Hargan, uh, you know, two, few things. One, whether, you know, uh, staff believes that the conditions of approval uh are consistent with and satisfy um the the state's um recommendation or strong recommendation that the um site plan be, you know, conditioned on minimization of the regrading. And second, whether the applicant uh concurs with the conditions of approval.
We discussed it with the applicant, and we indicated that we wanted them to reduce the grading plan as initially proposed, and they uh they they knew that when we had um scheduled this for this meeting, that that was gonna be, you know, that they were familiar with what the D E P comments were, and that we were.
and that we were going to recommend those conditions. So he is familiar that, um, that's, that's what we're recommending to you as the commission.
And, and you think that, uh, that, that, that those conditions will satisfy DEEP?
DEP's referral is, um, because there's no, this, no, none of the work is below the coastal jurisdiction line, their recommendation to us is a referral. Um, and we did certainly take that recommendation to heart by requesting some elimination in the regrading. Um, but I don't, I don't believe that they intended us to completely eliminate all the regrading onsite. Um, certainly as, as, you know, if you guys review it and you feel very strongly, um, that, you know, this applicant can reduce the regrading more, that is within your purview to recommend that.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other commissioners? So we can put this to a vote? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. Now, uh, Commissioners Noonan, Ford, Levy, Francis, and Brayman. All those oppose? Commissioners Harrison and, uh, Braun, which I believe brings us, us, us up to seven. The motion passes. And then back to the agenda. That brings us to the end of compliances and to public hearing. We only have one item on public hearing today. So I'll call eighty-three Castle Avenue Zoning Compliance Application of Burwick Associates LLC pertaining to a forty-three unit residential development pursuant to Section eight dash thirty G of the Connecticut General Statues, statutes, excuse me. Um, Mr. Went, before we, uh, let Attorney Rizzio take the reins, is it worth, um, giving the commission kind of an outline of what our timeline is with this application?
Um, we can certainly. It is certainly our hope and, and hopeful expectation that we will complete this matter tonight. Um, if we do not, uh, the, the commission needs to make a decision on this matter no later than the fifth of February. Um, so rather than putting you in the position of, if, if, if we were to extend this public hearing, putting you in the position of having to finish the hearing and vote on it the same night, we might want to consider a supplemental meeting a, a week from tonight. Uh, but hoping that that's not necessary and that we can, uh, hear all the concerns, hear the applicant and, and any concerns that, uh, folks that are on this meeting tonight may wish to express.
And I, I wanted that put out there because, um, this, um, this has been in the backlog. We do have this time requirement. And in no way am I suggesting that we just move along and not do our due diligence. We just saw what happens with two point, the two dash six Beacon Square, what happens with two, when we actually do our due diligence. So we should certainly take whatever time we need tonight and any other nights, but in full transparency, so everybody is aware of what our time restrictions are. And I think it was best to be put this up upfront. But again, in no way am I suggesting that we just move along or anything like that. We should do the due diligence that we would otherwise do in our regular course, but now everybody knows. So, Attorney Rizzio?
Uh, Chairman, it's a great pleasure. I, uh, am before you tonight representing, uh, Burwick Associates LLC with regard to the property at eighty-three Castle Avenue. We are before you, consistent with Section eight dash thirty G, for a, um, basically a zoning compliance application that shows that our plans are consistent with what would be approved pursuant to eight dash thirty G. And, um, this development is for a forty-three residential unit prod, project. Basically thirteen studio and efficiencies, eighteen one-bedroom, twelve two-bedroom residential units. This will be a, as I said, consistent with the Connecticut General Statutes eight dash thirty G, providing housing opportunities for mixed-income families. As you know, seventy, we have submitted affordability plan of which seventy percent of the units would be market rate, thirty percent of the units would be designated as affordable. Um, we have site, um, and Chris Russo normally is working the, um, uh, the, uh, computer for me tonight. Um, and as far as giving out applications, I talked to Emmeline about sharing the, uh, some of the exhibits with you and as we'll put them up as we go. Um, Emmeline, if you could just put up the site plan to start. I'll take the commission through the site plan. Uh, we have a pretty straightforward application. I think this application's, okay, there's our site plan. Our build, we are, the, the site is, if, if you all know the site, it sits behind the Town Fairhair Tire. It is on the corner of Burwick Avenue and Castle Avenue. The property, um, is in a residency district, abutting a commercial district, as I said, to the rear, and it's basically in a multifamily zone. Um, sorry, I gotta just get rid of this. Um, we are proposing a building that is four stories of residential above parking and then also surface parking surrounding the site. Um, the property will be very well landscaped. Property, as I said, will contain eighteen efficiencies, thirteen efficiencies, eighteen one-bedrooms, and twelve two-bedroom units. The, the building itself will be made up of a brick veneer and a hardy board. Um, it'll have an entrance on Burwick Avenue, and the building will take advantage of the sloping so that it'll allow for parking underneath the building. The building itself, had, well, the site plan itself will show, as you can see, if we go back to the site plan, fifty-seven parking spaces. Um, that's really important. One of the most important things in dealing with, um, an affordable project, and it certainly, this commission has looked, is, is there enough available parking so we don't have any negative impact on neighbors? In this instance, we are providing fifty-seven parking spaces for forty-three units. That's about one point three two per unit, which exceeds most of the parking requirements the board isn't, uh, has, has put in, 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 has approved. Most of the parking, um, applica, most of the applications, eight dash thirty G app, applications the board has, uh, previously approved. Normally, it's around somewhere between one point one to one, one and a quarter. But that's only half the story. Because what type of units are there? As I said, we have thirteen efficiencies, eighteen one-bedrooms. So that basically gives us thirty-one bedrooms plus twen, twelve two-bedrooms, gives us fifty-five bedrooms. So not only are we one point three two units per unit, one point three two spaces per unit, we exceed one unit, uh, one parking space per bedroom in the overall project. I think that's probably unprecedented in most of the, uh, affordable applications that you have before you. As you can see, there'll be parking underneath, there'll be a, a garbage container. Entrance will be on Burwick Avenue. We can go to that front, back to that front elevation, Emmeline? Building, the building will be colonial in character, as I said, with a brick veneer, a brick veneer. Getting there?
Oh, boy.
Sorry. I'll keep going. Uh, but basically, it's gonna be brick veneer and hardy board. You'll see an elevation that should pop up shortly. Um, of the units, the efficiency studios will be approximately five hundred and twenty square feet. The one-bedroom units will be between seven hundred and twenty square feet, and the two-bedroom units will be eight hundred to eleven hundred square feet. Each unit's gonna contain an open concept kitchen, living room, dining room, uh, full bath, closets and washer dryer. And some of our two-bedrooms will have a second full bath. These are intended to be re, uh, rental units, although there's no limitation on the amount of, whether, uh, whether they're sold in the future. However, there will be, would be price limitations on the affordable units as there is rent limitations on the affordable units, depending on how the properties are marketed. Um, you will see, basically, there's ten units on the first floor and then eleven units on floors two, three, four. This will all be wood construction. Um, we have our traffic engineer, who you'll hear from Scott Hesketh tonight. We'll talk about how there is no impact on the traffic, um, and any change in level of service with regard to the traffic on both Burwick and, um, and Castle Avenue. The property is unique if, I'm sorry, if we can go back to that site plan because a couple of things that came up during planning and in code enforcement. If you look at the site plan, it's, as you go up Castle Avenue, originally, we had, we, we were, we had, had our driveway, we're basically gonna take down is a, a, a huge oak tree, which the tree warden and, um, people going through court enforcement, really, we, originally, that was where, if you can see, there's like a, a little knob that cuts out in the, on the corner of the prop, in the, almost in the corner, that lower corner of the property there. Um, what we did is redesigned our project so that even though originally the driveway was supposed to go and we were gonna take down that, that tree, which is basically a forty-eight inch caliper, old oak. Um, we, we, in meeting with the town, in meeting with the town engineers, we elected to keep the tree, landscape around it, and move, move our, slide our, our entryway toward Burwick Avenue. We have met, you'll, I'll read a letter in from Laura Pulli, which talks about how even the sliding of the driveway, keeping the tree, that we meet all the required site distances that we, that, that, that are, that are required to operate, um, to exit and enter, enter the property in a very safe fashion. On top of the fifty-seven parking spaces, we'll also provide forty-five bicycle parking spaces, which will be available. And the trash for the facility was sent to a room on the garage floor via a trash chute, a trash suit, a trash chute, uh, which will then enter a compactor. The trash will be then rolled out for pickup and removal from the site. The site has access to both public water and public sewers. The applicant has received unanimous approval from the Water Pollution Control Authority for its, for, um, access to the, the town sewer system for forty-four dwelling units. As I said, we are proposing forty-three units. Um, the site is located within fi, not located within five hundred feet of the boundary of any other municipality. And as we will talk about the, um, site drainage and, um, and our sewer and, uh, capacity, um, Scott, or, or, um, Rob Sonnixon, who's with Waldo Associates, will discuss that very shortly. That's a, basically, a short overview of the project. What I'd like to do is I, I see John Gads, who is our architect. If I can have John basically take over to just take you, walk you through the architecture. Um, then we'll have Rob Sonnixon take you through the engineering, followed by Scott Hesketh to talk about the traffic. Keep in mind, in eight dash thirty G applications, we would need to see that there would be some impact on the health, safety and welfare of the residents of Fairfield that would outweigh the interests of affordable housing. And we believe that we've satisfied all those interests and that, obviously, that, um, this affordable housing is necessary and essential to the town. So John, I'd like to turn over to you so you can explain your, explain the architectural, uh, for the property, for the project.
John, mute.
Can we find John?
He's still on mute.
John, you have to unmute yourself.
Still on.
I can try and... You know what we can do, would, if you want, while he's deciding to unmute himself, would we, would you like, would you prefer we move to the?
He's got it.
Can everybody hear me?
Oh, good, great, John.
Okay, this is getting to me. But anyway, uh, for the record, I'm John Gads. I'm a principal in the architectural firm of Gads Associates. Also president of Primrose Companies. Uh, we specialize in design, development and construction. In this particular case, uh, we're the architects of record for, uh, Burwick Associates. Uh, when we were challenged with the, uh, the task of designing a building for this site, uh, under the eight thirty G format, uh, we took into consideration, uh, the type of makeup of the units. And as Attorney Rizzio has, uh, uh, stated for the record, uh, we came up with a mixture of, of, uh, studio units, one-bedroom and two-bedroom. Primary, you know, the primary or the largest number of units are the, uh, studio and, and, uh, one-bedroom units. Uh, the building is, uh, in a typical podium-style design. Uh, this site in particular, uh, is similar to a lot of the other sites that we, uh, have, where, uh, basically, where the building is put into a sloped area so that the parking area, the parking is partially, uh, underground. Um, and, uh, you know, the, uh, again, it's a typical design. Uh, the area, as stated, is, is basically a mixture of, uh, uh, multifamily and, uh, commercial. Uh, and so the, uh, the intent was to come up with a building that sort of, uh, uh, complemented the, the existing structures, uh, to try to, uh, put it together in a way that's as maintenance-free as possible. Uh, and, uh, and, you know, basically, the architecture is pretty simple. Uh, it's, uh, the intent was to keep, uh, the original plan that was designed had a pitched roof. After meeting with the, with staff and, and, uh, others, it was decided, it was decided that, uh, to lower the profile of the building and therefore we wound up with a, uh, a, uh, non-pitched roof area with a parapet that would hide the mechanicals. Uh, so, uh, basically, each, uh, this, uh, each unit will have its own HVAC system, with furnaces in each one of the units, uh, and remote condensers in the case of the efficiencies. Uh, there are heat pumps, but again, the condensers will be on the roof. But the parapet is thirty-two inches above the roof, which will basically hide all of the equipment. So, but all of the equipment is meant to be on the roof. Every single unit is meant to have its own, uh, metering system. Uh, so they each is independent. Uh, the, uh, heat will be electric or, in the case of heat pumps and, uh, gas, in the case of furnaces. Uh, but the, you know, each unit has its own, uh, uh, utility hookup. Uh, you're basically, uh, you know, it's set up so that, uh, the efficiencies, even though they're efficiencies, they still have their own separate, uh, bedroom area. And, uh, as, as stated, the, the trash is dealt with, uh, trash chute that's accessible at every single floor, uh, trash is, uh, goes into a compactor and the compactor basically is serviced by, you know, a local, uh, trash hauler that, uh, you know, picks up the compacted, uh, blocks. Um, I don't know if there's anything else I can add. I believe Attorney Rizzio has already, you know, gone through the, the plan and if there's any questions, I'd be glad to, to answer.
John, if you can just elaborate on the handicap, there's, I think, believe thirteen ADA accessible units, and I think there's also, you designed a handicap accessible ramp for the, for the entryways. Is that correct?
That's correct. I mean, uh, obviously, the building has elevator, uh, but, uh, because of, uh, certain site requirements, the, uh, the first, uh, occupiable floor wound up having to be raised. And I believe that's, that was due to trying to save that oak tree. Uh, so, uh, as the driveway access, in order to save the oak tree, the driveway access had to, to be, uh, placed further west, which in turn raised the building slightly, uh, and therefore, uh, required the access as, as shown via stairs and ramp to allow for handicap accessibility. The original design, again, did not have that feature. Uh, it wasn't required. Uh, but again, because the driveway is moved, it, it, uh, it moved the height of, you know, the first floor of the building further, uh, higher than the, the grade and therefore it required the ramp.
They're also being...
The building is fully handicap accessible to all floors. Uh, and, uh, there are, you know, a combination of handicap units at every floor, uh, similar to the, uh, to the affordable requirements, ADA requirements are similar, uh, where a percentage of each type unit has to be, has to accommodate. ADA requirements are similar, where a percentage of each type unit has to be, has to accommodate the handicap. All of the other units, quite frankly, are also designed so that they can be modified if additional ADA units are required.
Okay. Next, unless, any of the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Geds? If you want to do it one at a time, or if you'd rather wait to the end, Chairman, I can have our engineer move forward with his presentation.
Well, let's see, if there's, any commissioner has a question, please speak up, because I can only see a few windows with the share. And Ms. Harrigan, please keep it up, that's fine.
One quick question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Francis.
There's a trash chute, is there also a recycling chute, or is it combined?
No, they, actually, you know, again, this is pretty typical of all of our multifamily building designs and development. Basically, there's two chutes, two separate doors, and every, you know, and every, each, each floor has it, has a trash room, access room. It's handicap accessible, and there are two doors, two, two chutes. One chute goes to the compactor, and one chute goes to a recycle container.
Commissioner Braun?
I'm reading the code review, code enforcement minutes. There was, can you just explain the parking? I can't tell really from all the plans. Is all the parking under the building, or is any of it outside the building?
Emily, if we could call up the site plan, it's basically, I would say, two, half, half the spaces will be under the building, the balance will be along, along the border. They'll be along Castle Avenue, and then they'll be...
Yeah, I can't find that one.
All right, do you see that, can you see it, the site plan on the screen now?
Yeah, but do I have that in my package? I don't see a color picture like that.
Well, it probably didn't come through color, but the, so basically, what you see it, what you see in green on the, on the screen, Commissioner Braun, is landscaped. What you see in shaded is the building. Underneath that shading is, I believe, twenty-two full parking spaces, and then probably partially another ten to eleven parking spaces, bordering the side of the building. The balance, that's the darker shade, is the building. And the balance around the edge, around, around the edge of the property, with some of the spaces directly against the town fair, what we'll call is the Town Fair Tire property, or the property at five-hundred Kings Highway, which has Town Fair and Goodwill in it.
Which, where's it, where's Castle Ave, where's Berwick Ave on this plan?
Castle Avenue, you see the blue car there, coming in? That's Castle Avenue, that's where the entrance will be on Castle Avenue. The front of the building...
Where's Castle Avenue, where's the entrance? It's sort of on the right side there?
That, that's where, it's up toward the top where the blue car is, that's the entryway. Then if you, if you go to Berwick Avenue, that's where the, the walk, the, the, let's call it, the pedestrian entrance to the building. If somebody were coming off the sidewalks into the building, they would, they would go into the, into the, into the entryway of the building. Predominantly, most of the, almost everyone, I would think, would park on-site, move, move into the elevator on the garage level, and then access their units from there. They also could always walk out to a sidewalk on Castle Avenue, walk up to Berwick and enter the building. The, that square you see in the front of the building is where the entrance to the building would be.
I'm, so, on the right, and where's the entrance for the pedestrian entrance?
Up, up, up in the right-hand, upper right-hand corner of the building.
Oh, you have to, so you would, I don't see anyone doing that. I mean, there's no parking along Berwick, right?
There is parking, I believe, on, there's no, there isn't any no parking signs along Berwick, or I believe Castle Avenue.
On the site, there's, you're not providing parking on the Berwick side because of...
We have, we have arranged for all our parking on-site, we have over one bed, over one space per bedroom on-site.
And the parking that's on-site is not on the Berwick side, it's on the castle, and on the other side, which is sort of the Town Fair Tire side, I guess? Yeah.
Yeah, Town, and, and, and under, and, and, and like I said, yeah, probably more than half the spaces are under the building.
And then the handicapped entrance is where, on this plan?
There, there'll be an elevator, which people can enter from under the building, where you see the handicap spaces, you know, under the building. You'll see them, the, that's what are, they have like the slash, that, and so people who are driving can park in the handicap spaces closest to the elevator, get out, get in the elevator and go up. If someone wanted to park on, if someone was handicapped and wanted to perk on Berwick Avenue, they could, they could park on Berwick Avenue, get out, and use the handicap ramp to get into the building.
Oh, you mean park not on the building, but on the road? Okay. And then the other, another question that came up during the code enforcement was, this open garage concept, twenty percent, what does that mean? That's like a fire code or something?
John, can you address that?
Garage has to be open, it has to meet a twenty percent, several of the officials mentioned that, as well as ceiling height, and what can fit under the garage ceiling?
Yeah, Commissioner, again, John Geds for the record, but the, it, it has to do with ventilation. That's what they were referring to. And in this particular case, the building, if you look at the dark shaded area, which represents the building above the parking, you see that the lighter shade surrounding the building is at a lower elevation, and therefore, this building, the way it's been designed, has basically ventilation around three of its sides. As far as the height, basically, all of these buildings are pretty much complying with the requirements for garage designs, and that is that there's a minimum of eight-foot ceiling, or not necessarily ceiling height, but height or distance from pavement to any projections from above, meaning that you could generally, you know, with this type of structure, the ceiling heights are generally ten feet. However, because of the beams that support it, we try, we, we maintain an eight-foot minimum to underside of beam, and therefore, it allows for, you know, most of your vehicles, such as, you know, vans or automobiles and so forth. So, this here, it's, it's typical design, and it's been designed to accommodate the requirements.
Can an emergency vehicle fit underneath the building, and maybe it doesn't matter that much, because you have so much space on the outside parking lot?
Well, an ambulance would. I mean, obviously, it's not meant for a, a fire truck to try to get underneath there, but a fire truck would never attempt to do that, because basically, if there was ever that kind of a disaster or, or emergency, the vehi, you know, the fire truck would be on the roads. This building is unique, because it fronts two roads, so it has the ability for, you know, a fire truck to access it without any problem. As I said, the, if, if, if there was an emergency, and, and basically, a, an ambulance was to need access, it would fit underneath the building. But because it, the design of it, you do have the two means of entering the building. One is the entrance on Berwick Avenue, and as Attorney Rizio pointed out, it's the, that dark shaded area in front of, you know, square in front of the building, that has the stairs and the handicap ramp. And then, if you, if you look just, just to the left of that square, there's an elevator, which provides access from the garage. So, emergency, when you're talking about emergency vehicles, obviously, there's basically two, an ambulance or a fire truck. An ambulance will have access to the, to the garage level and to the street side for access. The fire trucks will have the streets to be able to, to access the, the building.
And so, it does satisfy that open concept that is required, the twenty percent?
It's basically, it's more than eighty percent that's being provided.
And another comment was, is there a generator planned? And if so, where will that be located?
Well, at this time, there isn't, and the biggest problem you have with these type of sites is, and we, you know, we encounter this all, you know, all the time, where now more and more, you know, we, we attempt to introduce the, the generators. The problem is dealing with noise, and, you know, how to, you know, how to set it up in a way that it, it's not a nuisance to the adjacent property owners. And we tend to look at that, you know, later on, in, in, in dealing with, you know, the requirements that zoning officials, you know, that, meaning that we meet with, with the zoning department to, to make sure that we're in compliance with, you know, the requirements that, and, and most of the requirements have to do with noise. There are areas on this site, if you look at, at the left side of the plan that's on the screen, the, you know, there is a green area on the upper right corner, that would be the ideal location for a generator. But at, at this time, we have not introduced one.
Is the upper right corner, then, that's the portion on Berwick, that's next to some other house, that's kind of like behind Town Fair Tire, I guess? Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's, again, the, the only thing that we have along Berwick, is basically just, it's that green, you know, that large green rectangular, that's basically all landscaping.
So, there's only, okay, and there's only one vehicular ingress and egress, and that's along Castle Ave? That's the only driveway in or out?
That's correct.
And what is on the opposite side of where that driveway is located? It's hard to tell where the other, what's across the street from there. I know there's a couple of condo complexes, it looks like.
I think there's a, I think there's a six-unit condominium building across the street.
Is this directly across, is this driveway directly across from that, or?
No, it's, the driveway is further, it's, I believe the driveway is right across from the oak tree that's being saved.
But, oh, the driveway for the condo across the street?
Right.
The oak tree that's being saved is the one that's up Castle Ave? And the other trees, they're going to be removed, but then you replay, the landscaping plan has you putting what the tree warden recommends, four trees on Castle, two on Berwick?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
And shade trees on the space?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, just a quick question, I think for Attorney Rizio. Do you have a rendering of what the four-story building would look like in comparison to the other homes on Castle Avenue?
We have a four, we have a rendering of what the building, we look at, we don't have a, that, there's the rendering of the building, right there.
So, is it possible to get something in comparison to the other homes on the street?
No. There, I think there is only one, the only...
There's no possibility?
There's, what's that?
There's no possibility?
No, it's not part of our presentation, I don't, I don't, I don't think it's really necessary in this context. I think there's, I think there's only...
Okay.
I think there's only one house that actually borders the entire project. The balance is either street front, is either street, street side, or a parking lot for the, for the five-hundred Kings Highway Commercial District. Our building is going to be about forty-five feet from, from Berwick Avenue high, and it's a flat roof. I believe it's, I'm not sure, but I think in an RC zone, it's, I, I want to say, I think it's thirty-five feet to the midpoint of the roof. So, I, I don't think there's a, a big difference in height as to what can go there, and given the fact that we only border one residential property. It's not that, we haven't plopped something in the middle of a, a residential neighborhood.
Well, I presume other people feel differently, sir, so it's always good to see the vantage point of what it looks like in the middle of the neighborhood.
Sure. Well, that, that's, that's, that's pretty much what it's going to look like. From Berwick Avenue, it's got a maximum height of forty-five feet to the flat, to the top of the parapet.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other commissioners have questions? Hearing none, go ahead.
Next, I'd like to call Rob Sonnixon from Waldo Associates, who was our site engineer, who's worked tirelessly on this application in satisfying all the code compliance requirements.
Thank you, Ray. Good evening, everyone. My name's Rob Sonnixon. I'm with Waldo and Associates in Guilford, Connecticut, and I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of Connecticut, and I've been responsible for the site design. This is kind of the nuts and bolts part of the presentation, so I'm, I'm hoping that you'll, I'll, I'll move through it quickly, and I hope to cover everything that's important that we've been talking with staff about. Ray mentioned and talked about, and, and John filled you in on a lot of the, the things that we've been wrestling with since the beginning of the project. A lot of it had to do with site access. If we moved, if we had the site down where the oak tree was, the, the, the building floor would have been able to be lower. And, and that was something that, that we came upon right away. The tree warden said that, that tree stays, and I won't support you doing anything with it. So, that was sort of our marching orders. There are fifty-seven parking spaces on the site, and thirty-four of the spaces are under the building, in that gray area, and twenty-three are going to be outside on the surface. So, that, that's the mix. The majority of the parking spaces are going to be undercover in the site. There are three handicap spaces, which meets the, the code requirements for the, the handicap parking spaces. There's also one loading space, ten by thirty, sort of over, just above the, the, the oak tree on the, on the sidewalk, which we also have a big curve in, in order to be able to get around that tree. But there's a loading space for a, a moving truck to be able to, to park in, while people are moving in and out of the building. The side on the, the Castle Avenue side of the building is going to be completely open, and cars are going to be able to drive down the driveway and park underneath the building, driving in from the side of the building. The main driveway entrance is going to be at the northern end of the parking lot, there's a main, a main entrance. Most of the cars going into that parking area will drive into the driveway, take a left turn, a right turn, and enter down by the trash compactor, and fill in the spaces underneath the, the parking area. That, that's sort of the, the, you know, the, just fill in some of the blanks on the parking situation. Next, I was going to talk about stormwater management, so if Evelyn could bring up that stormwater's plan, which should be nearby. The, the design is required to meet the standard stormwater practices, and that is that for a, a two, a ten, a twenty-five, and a one-hundred-year storm, there is to be no increase in the maximum rate of runoff from the site between the current existing undeveloped conditions and the proposed conditions with the building and the pavement areas that are being proposed. We've done that in sort of a standard way, because there's no space on the site really to have open stormwater treatment. We use underground stormwater storage units, and they're located on the Castle side and the northern side, near the parking lot for five-hundred Kings Highway East. The, one of the things that came up during the code requirement was, we take credit for infiltration into the soil in those kind of units, they have open bottoms, and Laura Pulley asked that we do test pits to confirm the infiltration rate. That was something that we did, and her latest memos indicates that we addressed all of the stormwater management concerns that she had. So, you can see the, in, in blue, under the building, we'll have a, a catch basin under the building, stormwater that gets through the open sides of the building and onto the floor, will drain to that catch basin, and will drain out past the, the compactor units into another catch basin, and into the stormwa, underground stormwater storage units. Another important feature that we've added up to the upper part of the site, the two circular structures are stormwater quality structures, which will remove eighty percent of the total suspended solids from the stormwater before it discharges to an existing catch basin system that disch... basin system that discharges to the storm drainage system that's currently in place at 500 Kings Highway. Our storm drainage will have no impact on the existing storm drainage system that we're tying into, uh, and we think that it'll be very effective, and, um, the, um, engineering staff agrees with us on that. The other things that are shown on this site plan are just, um, the sanitary sewer connection, the potable water connection, and the gas are all coming in off of Berwick Avenue from existing systems. We did a sanitary sewer monitoring program that was unanimously approved by the WPCA Commission, um, to demonstrate that there's adequate sanitary sewer, uh, capacity in the system to be able to accept, um, the number of units and the population that we're expecting, um, in this development. The other thing that I was going to, um, talk about just briefly is the landscaping. Moving in from the, um, storm drainage system, one of the things that the engineering department asked for, um, was a green, uh, component in our storm drainage system, and, uh, we're doing that with a rain garden, which is located up in the, uh, in the, uh, sort of the southwest corner, southeast corner of the property down, uh, near the discharge point, uh, to our storm drainage system. The rain garden's going to have, um, wetlands-type species planted in it, as is generally the case. Uh, we're putting in silky dogwood and some sedges in there. I think it's going to be a nice little feature down in that corner of the site. The rest of the landscaping, uh, includes, uh, a rich mixture of trees such as birches and cherry trees, uh, many kinds of shrubs, including azaleas, hydrangea, persythia, and viburnum, um, as well as a lot of ground cover, uh, which includes edges, grasses, and, and blue stam, iris-type flowers. Uh, it's going to be a real, uh, a lovely landscaping treatment. One of the things that caused us to use as many grasses and low-growing plants as we did was there were questions about the sight line for the driveway, particularly as it impacted by that four-foot diameter tree. It was a very tricky thing for us to do, but we wanted to make sure that we keep all of the vegetation in the area that the cars are going to be looking, both, uh, toward Jennings Road, on, uh, Castle Avenue, and in the other direction, uh, toward Blackrock Turnpike. We have adequate sight distance, uh, based on, um, the analysis that was done by our traffic engineer. Once again, the engineering department agreed that we, uh, meet those requirements. Those are the main items that I wanted to cover. I also, um, I know Scott Hesketh was on the, uh, the meeting, um, earlier. He had another public hearing that he had to attend. If he's, if he's available, he could, he could address, uh, his traffic study. Otherwise, I will spin shit for him to go over the traffic study that, um, Scott did for the project.
Rob, I am here, if you can hear me.
I can hear you. I think everybody else can, so Scott.
Hold on one second. Does anybody have, any commissioners have any questions up to this point? Commissioner Braun?
Where was the test pit done at? I'm looking at an aerial, not in your presentation. It looks like there might be a test pit kind of in the vicinity of where most of the stormwater detention is, sort of on the Town Fair Tire parking lot end, and the cast, sort of halfway between Castle Ave and, um, Town Fair Tire, but sort of towards that end?
Yeah, we had, we, we did, um, a series of, three test pits. One is near the, um, the southern end of the property where the stormwater system, uh, is. One is down near the, um, along Castle, um, sort of closer to the Town Fair Tire property, and the other is, is located close to where the storm drainage system leaves the building. So we covered the entire site, so we got a, a good indication of what the soil conditions were throughout the stormwater system.
And I don't know if I'm asking the right person, but there's another question, um, in the code review about a retaining wall and a fence. Is, is that not in the plan anymore, or is that still in the plan? Something wall with a fence on top of it?
Change. Laura came up with that comment. There's a retaining wall in the, um, the southern, the south, um, western corner of the, of the site, um, where the, the Berwick Avenue landscaping, uh, there's about a two-foot drop down to the, um, the parking lot level. And, um, even though it's going to be landscaped above that, um, we were a bit concerned that with that kind of a drop, if we just had a retaining wall without any kind of fence on top of it, that it would be, um, a, a hazard. And it, and that retaining wall, um, I guess maybe we could put, put up the site plan again.
What do you mean when you say drop?
I can show you a little better.
Are you talking about elevation dropping, or when you say?
Yeah, well, okay, this is the plan. If you look, um, in, in the parking area in this, what we'll call this, at the intersection of, of Castle and Berwick, uh, that corner, um, if you move across the landscape area to the pa, four parking spaces that sort of face Berwick Avenue, there's a, um, the top of the, of the grade, uh, in the landscaping area is twenty-four feet, and the grade on the, in the parking lot is twenty-point-seven feet. So there's a, a bit of a drop there. It's less than, it's, it's, um, you know, less than four feet. It's three and a half, or less than three and a half feet. So we put a retaining wall along the interface between the, uh, landscape area and the parking lot. And then we come up, and it takes a ninety-degree angle and runs parallel to the proposed sidewalk, uh, along, um, Castle Avenue. And there's a landscaping area at the foot of that, uh, return, um, retaining wall. Those, that, basically, all of the retaining walls, there's another, there's another short retaining wall back at the, um, Town Fair Tire parking area, show a safety fence on top of them. It will be a, a four-foot-high fence just to prevent pedestrians from tripping and falling down the, the two or three feet into the parking lot. The re, suggestion was because of the sight lines, and it, and now, you know, Scott's going to talk about the sky, sight lines, but you can see the blue car in the driveway on the site, and you can see the, um, the dark dashed lines moving out from that car's windshield. Those lines are sight lines, and what they show is the distance that the car can see and the distance that the oncoming traffic can see, uh, cars coming out of the driveway. And what, what Laura was concerned about was, if you look from the car heading up toward Berwick, uh, across Berwick Avenue, up Castle Avenue, she was concerned that a fence might obstruct the view of the driver or obstruct the view of the, um, of the oncoming, uh, cars. And she suggested, and we have no objection, in fact, we, we think it's a good change, to move the retaining wall five feet closer to the building, which would move it behind the, um, the sight line, so that there would truly be no obstruction in the view. And we have no, uh, no problem with doing that. We will, um, we would certainly, uh, welcome that as a condition of approval.
So can you just, is it possible to put your cursor exactly where that retaining wall is going to be now, wherever it is?
Sure.
Right there. It, it's going to move back from where it's currently shown about five feet, so it's going to be back where the curb line is, uh, of that landscaping area.
Yeah, so what'll happen, Commissioner Braun, what'll happen is, there was current, Commissioner Braun, currently, the, there's some landscaping between the parking space and the retaining wall, that little green area. Laura, and, and I'll, I'll get to her letter in a little bit, Laura would like us to push that retaining wall closer to the parking space by five feet, so that we don't have any issues with any fencing impairing the sight line.
So I'm looking at the elevation, um, the, the elevation shown in little squares is the proposed new elevation, right?
Yes.
And the existing, pre-existing elevation is on the dotted lines, right?
Yes.
So you're raising the elevation of that whole green area to the right along Berwick to twenty-four-point-seven feet approximately, but the parking lot is at twenty feet. So now, is that being raised higher than it is now, or is it staying the same? Like, are you raising it up, higher up on Berwick from where it is now?
No.
Or are you keeping the parking lot lower?
Green there is going to be essentially the same. We're just smoothing it out.
Okay, and then?
The only thing that's dropping is the, is the parking lot. Currently, uh, the grade in the parking lot, um, up near where that four circle is, is, um, around twenty-two-point-three, and we're dropping it down to twenty-point-seven.
Yeah, Commissioner Braun, the commission, the reason for the retaining walls is for the digout, is, is, is for the, the amount of, uh, land that's being dug out for, to accommodate the parking area. So the, the retaining walls really are only visible from the inside of the, of the, of the, of the site, not from the outside, correct?
That's, that's correct, but by being flush with the surface, you do have the potential that someone who wasn't paying attention could walk off of them and fall into the parking lot. So we chose to put a protective fence, a short protective fence on top of the retaining wall.
The, the existing grade then is kind of sloped in, and that you have to flatten that out to put the building in the parking lot there, right?
That's correct. The, the, the slope generally slopes toward the left on the photo. It grades down from Berwick Avenue down to, um, the Town Fair Tire parking area. And that's the way the storm drainage flows, because the water's all flowing downhill toward that lower corner.
And is there any thought of using something like pavers or a s, not as impervious of a surface? I know that would change your entire drainage program, but is there a reason why that can't be done here? To allow just natural percolation of water into the soil?
Yeah, well, our system is going to be providing infiltration through the underground stormwater storage, um, and, uh, we feel that we've demonstrated that we're not going to be increasing the, uh, the runoff, and we really don't think that there would be any benefit from using any other kind of, of treatment other than a standard A parking lot treatment.
I understand that.
It's easier to maintain, um, et cetera, et cetera, and we've met the requirements, met and exceeded all of the stormwater management requirements. And we, we're actually adding, um, you know, a, a significant amount of green space, um, to this kind of a development, while we are providing plenty of parking, uh, for the building.
Okay, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Like to call Mr. Hesketh next, and then I'll, I'll, I'll sum up who's our traffic engineer. Scott, hopefully you're still there.
I am here. I was just waiting for the mute button to unmute.
Am I leaving this site plan out? Is that what you guys prefer?
Yeah, you can leave it.
Sure.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Good evening. For the record, my name is Scott Hesketh. I am a licensed engineer in the state of Connecticut. I'm with F.A. Hesketh and Associates, and I'm the, I am the author of the July twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one Traffic Impact Report, which was submitted in support of this application. I know you've heard a lot about the site, the sight lines and the parking and a lot of other things this evening, so I'll try to be brief. I know traffic reports are difficult to do with lots of numbers, so I'll try to give you the overall and then, uh, let you ask any questions if, if you so desire. Our office, our office was asked to look at the potential traffic impacts of, uh, this proposed development. When we initially wrote the report, it was a forty-five unit development, subsequently reduced to forty-three units. Uh, in the course of, uh, preparing our report, we researched the files of the Connecticut Department of Transportation, trying to obtain background traffic volumes for the area. Since we were in the middle of COVID, uh, we used, uh, conduct pre-COVID counts, um, and we did some sampling counts at seven, uh, local intersections, um, during January of this year to get, uh, turning movement distributions through, uh, th, uh, those intersections. The intersections we looked at, uh, were, uh, along Route One, Jennings Road, Route Three Seventy-Two, Longfellow Avenue, Berwick Avenue, and Castle Avenue. So we looked at the seven closest intersections to this particular site to make sure that we were, uh, reviewing the proper impacts of this proposed development. The background traffic volumes, which we developed based on that information, are presented in figures two and three of the report. The, uh, proposed development is a forty-three unit residential development. In order to generate the trip generation from that proposed development, we use the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Report. It's a standard engineering reference, which allows engineers and planners to estimate traffic volumes at proposed sites based on traffic volume counts that were conducted at existing and operating facilities throughout the country. The proposed, uh, forty-three unit development here is projected to generate approximately five hundred trips on a daily basis, two hundred and fifty entering the site and two hundred and fifty exiting the site. During the morning peak hour, we're projecting a total of thirty-nine trips, made up of ten entering and twenty-nine exiting movements, and during the afternoon peak hour, we're projecting fifty trips, made up of thirty-two entering and eighteen exiting movements. Our office projected that traffic to the local roadway network with, uh, distributions of seventy-thirty or eighty-twenty, with the higher percentages oriented to and from the south along Castle Avenue, and the traffic distributed itself through other local roadways, uh, with destinations to Route One, uh, the interstate highway, and other local town roadways. Capacity analyses were conducted by our office at those seven intersections for both the background and combined traffic volume conditions. Based on that analysis, the intersection levels of service at all locations were found to be acceptable, with, uh, good levels of service and minimal impacts as a result of the proposed development. As you've heard, the proposed site access is to Castle Avenue. The site driveway on the current plan is located approximately eighty feet north of Berwick Avenue. The site driveway provides a single-lane approach, and the, and the site driveway will operate under stop sign control. We're projecting, uh, exceptional levels of service A and B, uh, at the site driveway location as well. As you've heard, the, uh, the major point here, uh, with the design in terms of a traffic standpoint, was the intersection sight distance. Originally, as you heard, the driveway was on the left-hand side of this plan in the vicinity of the existing tree. As, uh, Rob Sonnixon indicated, the town staff indicated the tree was, was to remain, so we relocated the driveway to its current location. And as you can see on the plan, we're, we're providing about five hundred, uh, I'm sorry, three hundred and fifty-five feet of intersection sight dis, three hundred and thirty-five feet of intersection sight distance, um, of a vehicle exiting the site, looking behind the tree, uh, and in front of the tree. If one sits in the proposed site driveway, you can basically see all the way to the intersection of, um, all the way to the end of the street, basically, uh, which is a sight distance of about five hundred, uh, something feet. But as vehicles approach the site, the tree tends to block the vehicles for a short distance, and then they reemerge. So, uh, this sight distance plan shows that you can see behind the tree. Uh, once a vehicle is comfortable that no one's coming, they can pull up in front of the tree and look on the other side of the tree, and they should be able to see and be seen by approaching traffic and enter and exit the driveway safely. Looking to the left, exiting the driveway, the sight distance again is in excess of five hundred feet. Looking to the left, exiting the driveway, the site distance again is in excess of 500 feet. But we'd be looking across adjacent properties. We're suggesting that stop signs be installed at the intersection of Castle Avenue and Berwick, both approaches to Castle Avenue. One, it would provide a stop vehicle condition for northbound traffic, allowing vehicles and the site driveway to easily see and be seen. And it also helps to slow down traffic in the southbound direction, reducing the necessary site distance in that direction. So we believe that the proposed site driveway location with the installation of those stop signs, we can have adequate and safe intersection movements into and out of the proposed site. And as I think you've heard, the town staff has written a memo indicating that they are inconcurrents that we, we meet the appropriate standards here at this particular location. So based on the existing traffic volumes, the projected traffic volumes from this proposed development, and the calculated levels of service, as summarized in our report, it's our professional opinion that the approval and operation of this project will not result in a degradation of safety or, or will imperil the public, the public safety. If the commission has any particular questions related to traffic, I'll be happy to address them.
Scott, if you can, if you can do me a favor, Scott, and just also mention emergency vehicles and their ability to access the site and that how that should not be an issue either.
Certainly, yeah. And we've got a driveway that provides adequate width for emergency vehicles to both enter and exit the site. There's enough room in the parking lot for an emergency vehicle to maneuver the site. We're talking smaller ones, police cars, ambulances and the like. I agree that fire trucks likely to use the town roadways. Fire trucks tend to want to have enough distance between themselves and a building so they can safely fight any kind of fire or respond to any particular calls. If it was a non-fire-related item, a smaller fire truck certainly can enter into the site and use ladders to access the upper floors if, if need be. And I believe the plan was submitted to and reviewed by the fire marshal and, and town staff. And I haven't seen any comments indicating that they had any objections to the, to the site layout as it relates to emergency access vehicles.
Thank you, Scott.
Very much pleasure. Could I just add? I, I, I wanted to just mention that there's also a lighting plan in, in the site plan set that demonstrates that there won't be any lighting from the site, escaping from the site onto adjacent properties. The lights are all going to be mounted on the walls of the building. There won't be any additional poles on the site. And it was, it's provided by, developed by a lighting specialist, and it's, it's part of our application package.
Thank you. Mr. Hesketh, with respect to the stop signs, can you just, did you say they were going to, you were suggesting stop signs on Castle Ave and Berwick?
Yes, we were proposing that for two reasons. One, since, you know, we're maintaining the tree, the stop signs at that location would help to, one, slow traffic down on Castle Avenue, reducing the need for longer site distances, both for Berwick Avenue and for the proposed site driveway. And two, it would provide a stop condition in the northbound direction, which would allow traffic exiting our, our site to be able to see traffic at a full stop position and make it easier for them to enter and exit the site as opposed to looking across adjacent properties and looking farther down the street.
So obviously, we don't have the, the authority to put up stop signs such a request, and application would need to go to the police commissioner. How important are these stop signs for the health, safety, welfare of this application?
They're not necessary, but I believe they would help to improve the safe, the safety of the location.
Okay, so assuming that the, they were decli, the application, for whatever reason, was declined, is, are there adequate sightlines exiting, exiting this, this site?
Yes, I believe we have sightlines adequate for an approach speed of 35 miles per hour. And the roadways, 25 miles per hour, so I believe we have, we have more than enough site distance for the, for the posted speed limit.
And in your view, if there are no stop signs, you do not see a potential hazard, safety hazard? It would be better to have them, I understand that, but is there a safety hazard if they're not there?
That's a good way to put it. It, it would be, it would be nice to have them. It's not imperative that we do have it. No safety conditions or, no detrimental conditions would exist without them.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate the question. Thank you.
And one of the, one of the things I'd make to make clear to the board is, and Scott, you can mention this. It's, it's the town's desire to preserve this tree, which, which pushed our, our, our entry and exit up further along, along Castle Avenue. If we, if we were to add the, take down the oak tree and move the, move the entry and exit further south closer to King's Highway, there wouldn't be any issue, any issues at all, correct, Scott?
I think you'd be moving the driveway closer to Jennings Road, but yes, yeah, the, we have longer and better site distances the farther north the driveway goes. But I believe the site distance is in its current location, we meet the, we meet the requirements for the posted speed limit. It just, and trying to be cooperative with town staff and, and maintaining the tree, one of the suggestions we had was the installation of the stop signs, just-
No, no, and I, I understand that it was a concession on your end. Attorney Rizzio, your point's well made. I just, I need to make the record as to the safety with the stop signs.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Chairman, if I, if I could add, add one last thing, I don't know that you have, you've, I'm sorry.
Let Commissioner, we have some questions, so let them ask the questions.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing the commission to speak. Really appreciate that. Now, what steps have the applicant taken to put the stop sign up at Berwick and Castle? Is there any motion with the police commission? What kind of conversations have you had with them?
No, it'd be, it'd be something, subject to the police, it'd be subject to the police commission approval, a police commission approval at a later date.
Okay, well, I'm just asking because sometimes applicants go to the police commission before approval.
Right, in this instance, we, we're doing, we're proposing it as an additional safeguard, but it would be subject to the approval by the police commission.
So that's in the condition of approval here? You would definitely put that in, or request that, I should say?
It's, 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 it's beyond the zoning board's purview, but we would, we would, we would make a request of the police commission to add that.
And I just have another question about overflow parking. Now, where would guests park? Where would people park if they have more than the parking allowance worth?
Well, we have at least additional parking of two or three spaces, more than the bedrooms that we look, we have, which is very unusual. There is permitted parking on Castle Avenue and Berwick Avenue.
But there are chances that the, the police commission could say, could put up a no parking zone there, correct?
Sure, but we have, we believe we have adequate parking on-site to handle. We don't, we don't, we don't believe we need any off-site parking to meet the parking needs of this project.
How many guest parking spots do you have?
We have, there's no such thing as really guest parking spaces.
Because there's only parking, enough parking for all the residents of the, of the-
We have, we exceed one parking space per bedroom.
Okay, but I assume most people have more than one car, right? We live in the suburbs, so.
Not necessarily. I could tell you there's a number of projects we have that, that I, that I've witnessed in person where typically it's one and a quarter spaces, especially given the large amount of, that two-thirds of, two-thirds of the, of the units are one-bedroom inefficiencies.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners have questions? Attorney Rizzio, you had a point to make.
Chairman, one, one thing that's important, and I'm not sure it's, it's all been distributed, but I would like to enter it into the record because it, it is evidence that we have satisfied all of our, all the departments. Certainly from an engineering perspective, there's a letter dated June 7th, I'm sorry, dated January 7th from Laura Pullian and Jim Went. It states, Jim, that I have reviewed the latest submittals for the proposed apartment building at Castle and Berwick Avenues. A drainage report prepared by Walden and Associates dated September 8, 2021, the revised date has been submitted for review. The proposed drainage system provides stormwater attenuation for two- through 100-year storm events, groundwater recharge, and water quality improvements, and there is, and is therefore acceptable. The applicant has also demonstrated that adequate sightline distances provided with the new entry driveway entrance relocated closer to Berwick Avenue. However, the retaining wall that is proposed on the southwest corner of the property near the driveway does show a fence on top of the retaining wall. Not knowing the type of the fence that is proposed, my recommendation is to move the retaining wall closer to the parking space closest to Castle Avenue, approximately five feet to the southeast, so that the fencing will not impede the sightline to the southwest of the site from Berwick Avenue traveling towards Jennings Road. That's in the second paragraph. We would respectfully request that be made a condition of approval. We have no objection to Laura's comments. Finally, she states that the 48-inch tree that blocked the, the ISD is now being retained on-site with the new conditions proposed for a Berwick and Castle Avenue intersection. With the driveway relocated to this new location, vehicles can be seen to this east beyond the tree. And then there was a short time lapse where a vehicle is blocked by the tree. Then reemerge as discussed in the letter dated September 13, 2021 from Mr. Scott H. Hesketh, P.E. The traffic engineer states the appropriate ISDs are now provided for this proposal, regardless of the tree location and with the new measures being proposed. The site plan and drainage report adequately addressed my concerns stated in the code enforcement comments of February 6, 2021. Please let me know if you have any questions regarding this proposal. As you can see, this, the, the engineering and the traffic has been thoroughly vetted by our experts, and we believe we can provide a, a safe condition to enter and exit the site along with any engineer, with, with the site being properly engineered so there is no negative impact on adjoining and off-site properties.
Mr. Went, do we have that email as part of the record already?
The, I believe so, yes. The, the January 7th email from the engineering department, I believe that was forwarded to, but I could certainly forward it around again.
I just like to double check these things. Thank you.
It is, it is part of the record, and if, I'm, I'm happy to redistribute it. Shouldn't anybody not have it close at hand?
Thank you.
Chairman, I really don't have anything else for you. If there's, I'll, I'll reserve my summation for, if there's any opposition tonight. And so that's why I don't end up having to repeat myself, which, which I think the commission gets a little tired of.
Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Rizzio, for this really, you know, good presentation. I know this takes a lot of work. I had a, just another question for you, so bear with me. I'm a new commissioner here, my second meeting. So on the fifth page of your letter to the commission, you said Fairfield currently falls short of the 10% exemption threshold of the 830G law. Now, I'm just curious, maybe, and maybe you can show me, is there, to me, I've done a lot of research on 830G, and it seems to me it's really a mathematical impossibility for any town in Connecticut to ever reach 10% of affordable housing. I'm not a math wizard, but that's just basically what I've learned. Is there an equation you can show me how your building, how your application, you know, fulfills this 10%? Like, is there some kind of, like, I'm just curious, like, how does this fulfill our 10% obligation to this law? And I feel like every time we do add 830G portable units, our ratio changes, and it's not for the benefit of affordable housing.
Unfortunately, the way the law reads is, and, and one of the other things that is unfortunate, and Mr. Went probably is in the best position to explain that to the commission, is that none of these units are even count toward your ability to obtain a moratorium or satisfy a threshold until they're actually built and CO'd. So it, it's, it's a, it's a, it's kind of, you're always, you're always chasing the tail. And I'm not sure actually when, when you will catch up. But currently, we do not meet that threshold, and we believe that providing 30% of these units will, will certainly help get you to that threshold.
For 40 years.
Yeah.
For 40 years, yeah. And I think for the commission, I'm not finished. I think it'd be really helpful to have Mr. Barnhart here at some point, maybe explain how we arrive at that 10% because I'm really not sure we'll ever get there. I don't think we will, based on just the math. And I, and I don't think this Castle Avenue will get us there either. I understand that we're beholden to the law. I get that. I appreciate that, but, again, to, to quote Mr. Rizzio, what would you say the dog chases its tail?
Well, that might be for another night, too. I saw Commissioner Braun, did you have a question? And before you go, Commissioner Braun, is there anybody else that has questions? So I can get a lineup here. Commissioner Francis? Okay, Commissioner Braun?
Just about the traffic study, could you explain again? The, the traffic study is dated January of 2021. That is in the middle of the pandemic. And then in the traffic study, it says added 0.6% like standard growth to get to where we are now. But I thought you had mentioned something about you, you modified the numbers to make it not during the pandemic. Is, is that in your study? Is that explain how the, the current conditions were modified to make the counts, I guess, higher than they would have been during the pandemic?
Get Scott Hesketh to the record. Yes, we obtained traffic volume counts from the Department of Transportation. I believe the DOT counts they provided to us were from 2015, which were pre-pandemic. We also had access to the previous report prepared for the recent, recently approved housing development at the end of the street, at the end of Castle Avenue at Black Rock, at Black Rock. And the information from that report was pre-pandemic as well. So we used that data pre-pandemic. We did our sampling turning movement counts during January, which unfortunately was during pandemic. But we used the directional distribution of traffic we, we observed through the intersection. So although the traffic volumes were lower, it's reasonable to assume that the turning movement percentages were probably close to correct. So we took these higher pre-pandemic volumes from those two other studies and balanced them through the intersections using the turning movement percentages that we saw in January. And then based on historic growth rates from conduct counts, which was, I believe it was a half a percent or 0.6% per year growth rate, we applied that to the volumes to a, to a design year of 2022 to, just to keep the traffic growing to, to the design year when this development would be completed. So we believe that the traffic volumes reflect pre-pandemic conditions. Unfortunately, you know, we have to write reports during pandemic times, and planners need to plan, and developers need to plan, and, you know, we can't wait until the pandemic is done to do, to do additional counts. We had to rely on the best data available.
But your, the counts themselves that you took, where you put the wire across the road, you did, you did that, right? And that was done in January of 21?
No, we, we did turning movement counts at the intersections.
Actual counts of actual traffic?
Yes, people sitting in their car, watching people go by with a counting board and hitting buttons every time someone makes a right, left-hand turn, go straight. And we sat at the seven different intersections for, for a period of time during both the morning and afternoon peak hours.
And the, the, the question that you posed to the fire department that they didn't get back to you on, was, was that related to access? Or, I mean, I, I know the building is built to meet fire code, but the question you posed to the fire chief or the fire marshal, was that related to access to the site based on traffic and parking conditions on the, on the streets?
Well, I think, I think the plans were reviewed by town staff for all, for all purposes, you know.
Did the fire, or fire chief weigh in on anything related to access to the site based on potential parking or traffic conditions?
I'm not aware of any negative comments related to that subject.
Are there any positive comments? Is there any comment?
They had an opportunity to review, and they didn't say they didn't like it, so.
Okay, so there's nothing from the fire department to you?
I, I, there's nothing from the fire department to me. That's correct.
The fire, the fire department reviewed all these plans during the code- The fire, the fire department reviewed all these plans during the code compliance.
They have questions and you answered some of them to me, but I don't know what they, you know, I don't have anything from them to know what they look at or what they considered. I always think about parking overflow and narrowing of the roads and access. And I don't, I don't know if that question was posed to them or not. I've read some letters that came in that show a pretty, pretty jumbled up haphazard situation on those roads with, I think cars are, are cars allowed to park on both sides of Castle and Burwick?
Yes.
So that, that's, that creates, you know, a problem if there's a lot of overflow parking, you know? And it would be nice to hear from the fire department about how that could impact access.
We believe, we believe our project has significant sufficient onsite parking to handle, to handle the demands of our tenants.
I understand that. I have a question about the test pits. I found the plan where it shows where they were done. So it looks as though there's four test pits that were done. Three are, we're kind of on the oak tree side, which is Castle Avenue side. Sort of equal space, but more towards that side. And the other one is on the left, well, I guess you'd say northeast, kind of where you're putting most of the detention system. I would say on the, it's really the Town Fair Tire side, I guess. Because there's no road on that side. Town Fair Tire parking lot goes on the end of the property to the left. Or I guess that would be northeast, okay. And there were no test pits done in the rest of the property, like the middle or the other side. I've heard, I've read some letters which indicate there could be an underground spring on this parcel. And I'm wondering how we could verify whether that's true or not. If there are no test pits in the bulk of the property, they're kind of along the edge, the Castle Avenue and then the left side, which I think is where the Town Fair Tire parking lot stretches around towards Castle Avenue.
The test pits that we dug were located within the area that we're proposing to use for our stormwater storage and infiltration structures. It didn't, there wasn't really any reason for us to be digging test pits under the building or in other parts of the property because we really weren't going to be utilizing that soil for our stormwater system, so. But with that said, the, the site grades up toward Burwick Avenue. It's lower toward the Town Fair Tire end. If you look in the catch basins, the groundwater is also higher down in the northern end of the site. And there's no evidence or reason to believe that there's any kind of, there's no evidence that there's any kind of underground water movement up near the Burwick end of the, of the site. So it's, it's dry and high. And there was no reason to investigate it further.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not questioning it at all. I'm just, I mean, perhaps nobody knows, but and I don't know where it would be either. It could be a piped water course, you know, in the course of history when we thought it was good to get rid of rivers and just put them in pipes, I guess. If there was a piped water course, how would you go about discovering that or finding out? Because it would be, I would like to find out now if there is one or if there isn't one. Would, would somebody do like a subsurface like survey with some kind of equipment that could spot a piped water course under there?
Well, there are utilities that come onto the site. There were, there were a row of houses that were sort of along Castle Avenue historically that were removed. There's really, there are no records during the demolition of the site of any kind of groundwater problem occurring. There's just simply no, no record of, of any kind of problem. And storm drainage systems can, can become clogged or have other problems, but I'm not familiar with any of them. And we've never seen any problems.
And for the record, Rob, Rob, there's, there's no wetlands on the site either. Is that correct?
No, no wetlands and the flood plain is, designation is off the site also.
What was here, so you said there was a demolition down? What was here before it was just a piece of vacant grassland?
I believe there were three single-family houses on the property that were removed.
You know, when?
Many, many years ago.
20 years ago or 30 years ago?
I think it was at least in the 1990s or before.
I think it was right around the time the shopping center was built.
And I'm just looking at the stormwater plant. So the catch basin, how does that work? You're putting a catch basin or there's already a, is that a new catch basin you're putting in sort of like in the middle of the build, beneath the building, I guess?
That's a new catch basin to collect the water that flows into the building garage area from the rain that falls on the open part of the parking lot. And that flows down into the underground stormwater storage system.
Right, Rob, there currently, for the record, there currently is no storm drainage system on the property, is there? It just, everything sheet flows, correct?
Yeah, there's one catch basin down in the, the south, southwest corner that ties into the storm drainage system in Town Fair Tire, on the Town Fair Tire property. We're going to modify that, that catch basin, but it's currently there.
Is that in the corner where the like?
Where the rain garden down in the corner.
Yeah, okay, okay. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Francis?
Can, can you clarify the overall height of the building? I gathered from one report it was 57 and I thought someone tonight said 40-something, low 40s.
On Burwick, I'll leave John gets the answer, but if you look, there's, there's a couple of different, on the elevations, they say the height. And basically, from the ground on Burwick, which is your highest point of the property and your flattest point of the property, where you're basically talking at the building above grade is probably 45 feet. Then you have the garage underneath, which probably can add another 10 to 12 feet as, as the property moves. Remember, the property sits flat and the, and the hill goes down. So the building as it's flat, on the top on Burwick, you have about 45 feet of structure. Then you have a garage that goes underneath it.
Yeah.
So it's kind of a sliding scale as, as Castle goes down. So the top here at the V right here would be Burwick and it's the top, and that's around 45 feet. And then as it slides down, it'll be, it'll go down to where the parking garage meets the ground. But all, the, the structural habitable part of the building is about a 40, about 45 feet, correct, John?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and the parking spaces were 34 under and 19 around, but on the property?
I think it was 34 under the building, including three handicap spaces and 23 on the ground outside. In addition, there's one loading space.
57.
You brought that up, Chairman. One of the issues, as we, if you can recall, whoever was on, whoever was on, a few of you were on the commission when we, when the commission approved the parcel at the other end of, on the corner of Black Rock Turnpike and Castle was, where do moving trucks go? How do they go? We felt it was important, having gone through the approval process on the corner of Black Rock and Castle Avenue, that a, an actual loading space be placed. There was, if you can remember, there was a lot of questions about garbage trucks, about moving trucks, you know, who's parking on the street like every other house. In this instance, we felt it was important to add a, a loading space on the site. And that, that was, that was, that was where that issue emanated from.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I think unless there's any other new questions, we should move on to public hearing. Hearing nothing. So that ends the applicant's initial presentation. The public will now have a chance to speak and I understand some have signed up in the chat. I will also make a, once we go through the people who sign up in the chat, which I would recommend if you are listening and you want to be heard, to do that. Otherwise, I will make a, an announcement at the end, invite people to speak if they have not signed up in the chat. As we go through, please just, if you can, just tell us your name, your address. You'll have enough time to speak about the application. Please just keep your comments relevant to the application. And we'll go from here. So Ms. Harrigan, I see Trish Pitco, is that who was up first?
Yep, we have Trish Pitco followed by Perez.
Hello, commissioners. Thank you so much for listening. I just want to real quick, before I forget, thank all of the residents who, the neighbors who have come out tonight to listen and I hope I do you justice. So I live directly across the street at 114 Castle Avenue. I have owned the home for nine years, but I have lived here for 35 years. I can tell you that when I was seven, those two houses were knocked down. So it wasn't in the 90s, guys, through the math. I, I have a lot to say and I did send it to you guys in an email. I'm just gonna, I'm gonna go through some of the most important parts because I heard a lot tonight that I'm gonna contradict. So let's start off with traffic. My very first one that I want to bring up is 1996, when Town Fair Tire application came in front of, the whole mini mall, came in front of the TPZ. The TPZ commission changed the application so that there could not be a driveway onto Castle due to traffic. Right there. This is 1996, long before any of the multifamilies which now exist on Castle Ave are here. To further the point, they also used my driveway, which I'm going to talk about extensively because guess what? It's right in front of where they want to put their driveway. I live up on a hill. All the residents from 94 Castle to 128 Castle use this driveway. It's a steep hill. And the only way to get down and to turn onto Castle is to have a radius. Now, 94 to 100 Castle Avenue is not condos. It's four multifamily, single-family dwellings up on this hill with me. And each of them have about three cars. And even though they have garages, they all park in the street. In fact, I sent you guys a picture of the cars which park on both sides of the street, making Castle Ave a single-lane road. And more importantly, I popped my daughter's school bus, which arrives around four o'clock, right where they want to put this entrance. It is absolutely impossible to see either way if you're coming out my driveway or no, what would be theirs. More importantly, it's a safety hazard. So I wrote to Fairfield Police and I asked for a traffic study to be done. I wrote this last week. I also, and I'm just going through, sent a letter to the fire marshal on the 6th of January, asking for Station 2 to do a health and safety plan. Because the issue has always been that they can't get up our driveway with their fire truck and their apparatus unless they come down the Jennings Way. And if there's cars parked there, they're not going to be able to come up our hill. They already have an issue turning the radius into our driveway. This has been an issue for the 35 years that I've lived here. So every time my epileptic daughter has a seizure and I call 911, that fire truck has trouble coming up. It's now going to have trouble on that street. There'll be too many cars. There's already the residents from all the multifamilies parking on Castle Avenue. We're going to add to that issue. The bigger issue I asked for them too is not only can they get up our hill, I had to go to Board of Appeals to get, they wanted a variance for the condos. They built the condos too big. So now can they get their apparatuses up the hill as well? They're on the street, not just right across the street from me, on Burwick. They're building multifamily homes. They're taking single-family homes, knocking them down and building three, four condos in their place. All of those people have started to park on the street. This street has changed vastly over the years. So if you could pull up, I don't know who did it, who's in control, if you could pull up the site plan where they show the driveway, and I'll show you where my driveway is.
Thank you, Ms. Harrigan.
Thank you very much. So my driveway is in between that tree and their proposed driveway. In fact, all along both sides of Castle Ave, right now, if you drive right past, there are cars there. So if they try to turn on the street either way, they're not going to be able to see where they're turning. And worse, if I try to turn when they try to turn, we're going to hit each other. And once again, if you go back to the email, I sent you a picture of this. You can't see my driveway. So if I come down, I'm not going to have line of sight and they're not going to have line of sight. The only way to fix that is to put up no parking. Now you're going to irritate everybody who's building in the neighborhood, everybody who parks their car on those streets. Hold on, I'm just going through everything that I wrote to you guys. The Town Fair Tire side has specific parking spots used. So even if the residents of this new complex wanted to have visitors, those visitors would not be able to park in the mini mall. Those parking spaces are designated for those businesses. You know, that was one of the thing that got brought up was, oh, where are they going to park? They're either going to park on the street or they're going to park on their property and their visitors will park on the street. And that's going to, that's going to hurt the line of sight for any of the residents within this two-block radius or Burwick trying to turn. So another reason I asked for a traffic study was because their traffic study was done during a pandemic. When Miller Nissan Ford, which uses our street, wasn't really operational, the school buses weren't running, there wasn't as much tractor trailers that come down our street as usual. All of that wasn't factored into their traffic study. Hold on, I'm going right past this. I don't, I don't know if you all know me. I just spent the last six years on the Fairfield Board of Ed. Every redistricting scenario takes Castle Ave and sends it to Holland Hill. We already have a 20-unit apartment building going on down the street on the corner of Black Rock Turnpike and Castle. If we build this, you cannot tell me that children are not going to live in these apartments. And this will further push redistricting the children from McKinley to Holland Hill. How is that ethically right to do to any of the kids that live on the street that go to their neighborhood elementary school? I, I just, I have a serious problem with that. We're going to keep building, but our school districts cannot handle this overflow. You know, many of the residents that live on my street have lived there almost their whole lives. They can tell you stories. They know so much just as I do as the last 35 years of this, sorry to say it, very small piece of property. Drive back to property and imagine how they're going to put 43 units on this postage stamp of a property. But bigger, watch all the people that are walking down the sidewalks. My neighbors who are over the age of 70, walking with their walkers and their dogs. And now all of this traffic is going to be included into their street and they're not going to be able to do this. It's going to be too dangerous for them. This is their chance to get out. We talked to our neighbors. We have this neighbor to feel, that's going to be gone. They're not going to want to walk to this part of the street. And worse is between Miller Nissan Ford and all the traffic we get from Longfellow, this is just going to add to it. It's going to be completely congested. Once again, you guys said this in 1996. Do you know how much worse it's gotten here? 26 years later, 27 years later, how much worse this street is? When you made the original decision in 1996 not to allow the driveway onto Castle Ave. I did look into the spring. Many of the neighbors, including my mailman who lives right around the corner, remembers in 1999, when the owners of this land once again tried to build, they hit a spring on the corner of Burwick. Every neighbor here who's lived here can tell you. Every neighbor here who's lived here can tell you exactly where that spring is. The bottom of my driveway on Castle Ave floods. Every single house that is up on this hill, from 128 to 94, and even over to 84, we all have water running through our yards from Jennings Road. It all goes down to Castle Ave. So it's unrealistic to me to say that we're not running towards Rooster River, that that's not where that water's going. And that if we're already seeing flooding, and you're acknowledging it by putting in a drain basin, I think you're not acknowledging the watering that's on Berwick. And, you know, I could keep going. You build a four- or five-story building, they're gonna be looking right into my house. What about all the kids that play on the street? What about the people that are gonna buy up the homes in the next couple of years and build multifamily homes? We're just gonna completely flood the street with cars. It's very sad to me to watch this neighborhood change so much in 35 years. It's a completely different view. And to think that 43 units could go there is absurd to me. It's absolutely ridiculous. I don't even fathom how that was possible. I want to thank you guys for listening to me. If I have any questions, I'm gonna send them in. As soon as I get the results of the traffic study and the letter from the Fire Marshal, I will send them to you.
Thank you. To any other members of the public, I should have said earlier, if you've submitted an email, we certainly read all the emails that are sent to us. Feel free to rely upon that, or as Ms. Pitco did, Pitco, excuse me, you know, feel free to talk as well. But we do read all the emails that come through. Commissioner Braun?
Can I ask a question to Ms. Pitco? I couldn't figure out the math of when those buildings were demolished. She was seven years old, but I don't know how old she is now.
When I moved here 35 years ago, that's when they knocked them down. So it was like in 87, 86?
Thank you.
There was two buildings, there was two homes. He knocked them down, and he hasn't built anything since. He's tried, but his applications get denied.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Perez, followed by Carol Hall.
Hi. Hello, can you hear me?
We can, yes, welcome.
Okay. Hi, thank you. My name is Gloria Perez. I live on 332 Berwick Avenue. So to visualize this, my house will be right next to this building. So, you know, I invite the Commissioners, if you could, to drive by and, you know, kind of visualize what this building, how close it would be to my house. The height of it is just, it's too much. I think it definitely, I'm not saying don't build anything in that area, but nothing this size. This definitely needs to scale down a lot. I drove by Fairchild, once I found out about this issue. I drove by and kind of looked around, what other buildings were in my area that would be kind of similar to this. So in Fairchild, on a 1.21 acres, there's 54 units. This one will be definitely a little smaller, but the lot size for this is only .57. So I just want you to visualize it, how big this building is gonna be on this small lot. As Tricia mentioned, the traffic, the parking, that's gonna create all the issues. We currently do have a lot of cars that park on streets. We even have commercial trucks that park there on Castle, on Berwick. I mean, I don't know if this is allowed, but there's trucks there that park already. The streets are narrow, so if you have one park on each side, it's only, you know, enough for one car to go by. You have to wait. And if someone's coming on from the opposite direction, you have to wait, move to the side, and kind of go through. You know, and this doesn't even include, I mean, which make me think about it, of the snow that we had just this past few days. If cars are parked in the street, it's really hard to clean the snow. I have cars parked kind of in front of my house, and if they don't move, it's just, the snowplow can't clean. And it makes it very difficult. In regards to privacy, I would lose all of it. My house is right next to it. I will lose all privacy. Noise level, I can see definitely going up significantly. I already have behind Goodwill, there's this huge motor, I don't know what it is. I don't know if it's a generator. But every, especially the summer, it turns on. It sounds like there's a truck in front of my house. And I don't know if all of my other neighbors can hear it, but I could definitely hear it. Regarding lighting, behind Town Fair Tire on the garage, there's a light that illuminates my house. I mean, there's my bedroom. Fine, we deal with it, we put curtains, okay, make it dark. On the other, on the right side of my house, there's another commercial, I think that's the vet veterinary. There's also lighting that hits my other side of the house. I mean, I don't know, you're gonna create such a big-sized building that there's definitely going to increase lighting, noise levels. I can hear everything. I can hear, especially in the summer, you hear the cars going by, the music, the arguments. So this is, you know, this is definitely, I'm very disappointed. And I don't know, there's, it seems like there's a lot of affordable houses. I'm not against it. But right now, when I received this notice, I looked around, and I'm like, wow, there's a lot of affordable houses being built in this area of Fairfield. I've lived here for 16-plus years. And I think that's it. I mean, I don't, I don't know. Hopefully, you know, you can hear my comments. And again, I invite you to drive by and just visualize what this building would look like. The value of my house will definitely go down. I don't think anyone, or any one of you, would like to buy a house that's next to a building. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Ms. Carol Hall?
Yes, my name is Carol Hall, and I live at 160 Castle Avenue, the corner of Longfellow and Castle at the four-way stop sign, which is at least 40% ignored, the stop sign, in either direction. It's ignored. We have had numerous accidents there. I have sent in pictures to you of the trailer trucks, the gasoline trucks that go up and down. There's so many things, Trish said so many of them. I've been there for 44 years. And when I moved in, there were two houses on that lot, which they tore down. We have no sidewalks, none. There's a little sidewalk behind Town Fair. There are no other sidewalks. There are also more owner, single-family homes than you might think. You're talking about a multifamily homes all over. That's not true. There's a lot of single-family homes that we've owned for many years. And we want to walk. We need to exercise, we need to walk our pets. There are cars parked on both sides of the street. My neighbor has four cars parked on the street. There's a car parked across the street from mine. We have had accidents. People have hit into our cars trying to get by. When you talk about people being able to park in front of this apartment on Berwick, there's already cars on the other side of the street, already. There is no room for anything of this size. I'm not saying don't build anything, and I have nothing against building, but this is just too big for the area. It's gonna cause so many problems. And there is water. There's water everywhere. They just built one or two blocks down, up on Haley, behind St. Emory's parking lot. Up on that road, up on a hill, they built a three-family. They have water issues so gigantic that they can't even solve them. St. Emory's parking lot is flooded constantly, water running down both sides of Haley into the storm sewers. There is water, we all know there is. It is not a safe situation for any of us. We have pets, we want to walk, we need to exercise. There are older people walking to the stores. There's no sidewalks. I can't believe a building of this size would have no guests parking? None at all, or one or two? Come on. That's disaster. The area, I think the whole area is the most diverse school district that we have. And I understand, I've worked in the schools, I've worked for the schools for 25 years. Diversity is very important, but it shouldn't all be stuck in one area and then have our children have to be redistricted. That's what I said in one of my emails. We have multi-district school buses coming through. The kids are standing on the street waiting for buses. I thank the good Lord my kids survived, and they don't have to do that anymore. But I'll tell you, I don't envy any young parent now with their kids on the streets. It's not safe. Please reconsider the size of this. Reconsider what you are doing. Think about the people who have lived there for all these years. I thank you very much for reading my emails and hearing us out. And I hope you all come to a good decision. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That's all I have listed in chat. Is there anybody, any member of the public that wants to be heard, that has not signed up?
Or just Mr. Chairman, for anybody that may have called in and is not on the WebEx, and I see a handful of call-in users. If any of those members wish to speak, they can press star 6 to unmute themselves and be heard. So this would be the opportunity for everybody who's on the phone may wish to be heard, to unmute yourself and make yourself known by pressing star 6.
Thank you, Mr. White. Is there anybody on the telephone that wishes to be heard now?
Yes, I did have a question.
Hi, can you just say your name and feel free to ask any questions in the, or make any other comments on the applicant, I have a chance to answer them in rebuttal.
Yes, thanks. My name is Jeff Melirogno, and I live at 1153 Black Rock Turnpike in Fairfield. And I just had a question in regards to the discussion on the parking spots. It seems like the presenter, and I apologize, since I'm on the phone, I couldn't quite follow who had made the comment, stated that the parking spots are based on the number of bedrooms. But obviously, the number of residents per bedroom isn't gonna be limited. You know, just because there's one bedroom doesn't mean there's only gonna be one person living in that bedroom. So I think it's sort of a moot point to list out the number of parking spaces based on the bedrooms, because there's gonna be more residents in the bedrooms than, there's gonna be parking spaces allowed. So it's sort of, I don't want to be crass, but I don't think there's any way possible that a two-bedroom condo is only gonna have two cars, or a one-bedroom condo is only gonna have one car. There's gonna be cars parked everywhere on the streets, and it's not just a Castle Ave, Berwick Ave situation. That's on every side street in town now. I mean, if you drive everywhere, there are parked, there's cars parked on both sides of every road. And it is, you know, it's amazing that there hasn't been pedestrian accidents or even as many car accidents yet. But eventually, the odds are gonna catch up to us on that. So I really want to just drive home the point that there are gonna be cars parked on both Castle and Berwick. They're not going to be just in the parking lot or in the parking structure. And especially if people come to visit the residents of the new proposed building, they're gonna be parked in the street as well. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Is any other member of the public wish to be heard? Going once.
May I just add two more comments I forgot to add before?
If you don't mind them being quick, please.
Yes. 1996, when they put in the proposal through TPZ for Town Fair Tire to be put in, in the minutes, they promised that the bay door closed, would be closed. They haven't been for 26 years. They're completely wide open, and the whole neighborhood can hear everything, the drills and everything coming out of Town Fair Tire. So this, these 43 units are going to hear those as well. I already forgot my second point. Oh, their proposed driveway, they will have to cut down two to three trees that are already there. Massive trees that have been there for over 40 years.
Thank you. Last call for any member of the public. Once, twice. That'll conclude the public hearing portion of the application. Attorney Rizzio, back to you for rebuttal.
Chairman, I'll be brief with a quick summary and some rebuttal. It just so happened, unfortunately, I've been around so long, that I actually did the 1996 hearing on this, on the Town Fair Tire application. And the reason the driveway was cut off from Castle Ave, and it's just giving the board some historical perspective, although it doesn't really mean as much. But the whole reason for cutting off the driveway on Castle Avenue was there was a concern that people would short-circuit the Jennings, the Jennings Road light and cut through these parking lots onto Castle Avenue and become a way for everybody to get around traffic. That was the reason that the board wanted to shut down and only have access from King's Highway. They were worried about traffic going directly from King's Highway onto Castle Avenue, not taking advantage of the Jennings, of the Jennings Road, of the Jennings Road light. I empathize with Ms. Pitco. A lot of her problems and a lot of the problems that the neighbors are currently experiencing have to do with ill-designed projects and people who don't park where they're supposed to park. You know, you have all these properties up on this hill with inadequate, that were not designed properly. Our project has been through significant review by every town department and found to be able to be operated safe with the appropriate site distance and the appropriate controls attached. I can tell you, I don't believe that anybody did the drain, did any of the drainage in those homes that were built 40, 35, 40 years ago ended up with any of the kind of drainage requirements that we were required to meet. That is all evolved in the last 20 years. So a lot of the issues, whether our project was approved or not, those issues will not be corrected by our project not being approved. And those issues will cease to, will continue by basically projects that were built and designed prior to the town, had such a complete and thorough review process, so that there were not drainage. A new project, you don't have the drainage issues. Proper drainage is installed. Two-to-100-year storms are all be able to be met and contained on-site. We will not have any stormwater drainage problems. We will in fact probably be, will be enhancing the storm drains that currently exist in the area. With regard to lighting, as we said, we have a lighting plan that shows that there'll be no ambient light going off the site that would affect Ms. Perez. With regard to the sidewalks, everybody was talking about being able to walk safely. Our project, there's currently sidewalk that goes from Jennings Road, I basically up Castle Avenue behind the Town Fair Tire property. Our project will be totally encircled with five-foot-wide, brand-new sidewalks. So now the concern of people being able to walk down to Walgreens, everybody from basically Berwick Avenue down will be able to walk to Walgreens, will be able to walk down to the Town Fair site, the Goodwill site, and down to King's Highway in a safe and efficient manner because new sidewalks will be installed along Berwick in front of the property and the entire length of the property along Castle Avenue so that all the people that maybe have to hobble over grass or don't have the ability to, uh, walk safely down to the intersection will now have the ability to do so. So this project from a safety perspective, pedestrian perspective, and from a driving perspective will be the safest project built along, along this, along this way. Um, you've heard from a professional engineer who's studied the traffic. They've, both your engineer and our engineer have agreed that the site dis- adequate site distances have been met, that people can operate safely on, to the site, even if, even if the police commission did not add the require, we're happy to go there to seek these stop signs. Um, but even if the police commission did not add these stop signs, that this project could still operate safely. With regard to the amount of parking and guest parking, typically, this commission has approved applications, and I've seen throughout the state, applications that have one point one to one point one and a quarter parking spaces per unit. Many of those spaces, many of those projects had, um, had a, a much different unit makeup where there were much more two-bedroom units, less efficiencies. Um, I just wanted to point out that we are at one point three two, which has probably been the highest, um, will probably be the highest percentage approval, uh, in town for an eight thirty G project. And most importantly, what I was trying to show is that such a hu- such a high, uh, percentage of ours, of our u- our units are either efficiencies or one bedrooms, that we do have the ability to add parking spaces per each bedroom and still have, uh, uh, two spaces left over. On top of the fact that no one owns the parking spaces that exist on Berwick Avenue or Castle Avenue. If people that live in Ms. Pittco's subdivision elect to not park in their garage and park on the street because of a ill-designed driveway, that, that is not our issue. So any, any, any person who wish to enter, park on the street would have the ability to do so. We believe in, uh, our traffic engineer, your traffic, your, your site air, your engineer, and through code compliance that we have adequate parking for our site. In the end, this is an eight dash thirty G project and there is a significant, um, requirement that, that to be shown that there must be some significant safety or health reason why it would, should outweigh the need for affordable housing where a town has not met its require, its requirements. In this instance, both our engineers and the town engineers have demonstrated and put into the record and shown that there is no significant or no reason from, from a safety perspective or a health's perspective that this, that, that denial of this application outweighs the need for affordable housing in the town of Fairfield. Additionally, um, this, this project is, we'll add to the numbers that are so desperately required. Part of the issue in chasing this dog's tail is when you do add additional apartment building, apartment units that are, that don't have an affordable component or a very small affordable component, it makes it very, it makes it very difficult for the town to catch up. But in this instance, these units are needed. These units are required. The prop- the property also, as you know, is a count town, as this commission has considered whether there is an impact on an historic district or any coastal resources. In this instance, this project does not impact any coastal resources and does not any, but, but any historic community. It borders on a commercial property and multi-family residential, which is exactly what this is. So it's very consistent with the uses in the area. For all these reasons, I would respectfully request this commission grant this application. It is consistent with the requirements of the state pursuant to section eight dash thirty G. There are no significant impacts that have been testified to, nothing put in the record to show that this project cannot be operated safely. In fact, all the contrary by your, by your town official, by your town departments. And our experts have shown that this is a project that should be approved. This is a project that has met all the requirements to operate safely and that there's no significant impact on the health, safety of any of the residents of the town of Fairfield. In fact, this property will probably operate the most safely of any project that has been built along this corridor. So for all those reasons, I respectfully request this commission grant this application. I thank you for your time and patience and I think we got this, hopefully be able to have this matter closed tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Rizzio. Any final questions, Attorney Ford, uh, Commissioner Ford, excuse me?
Uh, thank you, uh, uh, Chairman. I just, I'm going to ask the Matt Wagner question, Attorney Rizzio. Why not make the whole thing affordable?
Well, the, look, first of all, we're not required to. Secondly, secondly, the state has, has, has decided that in order for, to, to, um, there has to be some kind of financial ability for a project to have success. And that the state has said that by placing, making thirty percent of the units affordable, they believe that that will increase the amount of people willingly, being, being willing to build affordable housing. It's not my rule. It's, it's the state's rule pursuant to section eight dash thirty G. I mean, if, 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 if there is a change and it's required to build a hundred percent affordable, um, you know, the, the application will come forth. But pursuant to section eight dash thirty G, there's only a requirement to be, for thirty percent to be affordable. I can't substitute my, my theory as to why it's thirty percent for, for the, for the, for the state representatives. They can only tell you what the law states. And we're meeting-
The owner of the property could build a hundred percent if he wanted to.
We're meeting the requirements of the law and that's what's required.
But you could do more if you wanted to. Isn't that true?
That's, that's not part of our, that's not part of the proposed project.
I understand. It may not be economically feasible, but you could, you could do it.
Commissioner, you could, you could build every, 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 every house in town could be built and given away for free. Every, if, if, if people could do it. In this instance, the law requires that this commission look and say that as long as thirty percent are affordable, we put our affordable plan together, our forport- our affordable plan complies with the state law, we're required to make thirty percent of the project approval. No less than thirty percent. In fact, there's a tiering of a fifteen percent of eighty percent and a sixty percent with regard to incomes, and we satisfy all those standards. But for some significant health and safety impact on other residents, which we don't believe has been demonstrated, the need for this affordable housing outweighs the, outweighs the ability this commission to deny this application. I, 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 I understand your concern and, um, you know, it's funny because I, I, I've done a couple of these and I can tell you, I've had some neighbors say, some neighbors approached and said they don't want a hundred percent affordable in their neighborhood. So it cuts, it cuts both ways. It, you know, some people think if it went a hundred percent affordable, it would, it might have, a hundred percent affordable may, may have a more of a negative impact on their values than thirty percent affordable. It's a balancing act that the, that the legislature entered into in designing, in designing this, um, this calculation. All I can tell you is that we've satisfied every requirement that we need to get this project approved. I understand your concern, but it, you know, that side, that, both those concerns both cut both ways. And I've seen it in all the towns where, uh, believe me, I've seen neighborhoods fight a hundred percent affordable projects because they think that has a detrimental effect on their values. I, I guess I'm considering that maybe seventy percent market it allows, allows for no tiering or, or impact on the value, better, better balancing of, of values within a neighborhood. I, I don't know. I don't know the reason they did it. I do know that we've met all the standards that are required.
I appreciate your, your answer, Mr. Attorney Rizzio. I just, I had to ask the question because a former chair, uh, Mr. Wagner always, always asks that question at, at these applications.
Then, then miss, then, then I'm sure the chair, if, uh, the current chairman is going to act like the former chairman, he said, Mr. Rizzio, you've repeated yourself enough. Can we please conclude this, this, uh, hearing? And I, and I, and I'm done.
Well, we have to be consistent, I guess. Um, any other commissioners with some final questions? It's nine fifty-three, but Commissioner Braun.
Not so much a question for the applicant, but a question for the chair, chairman. Um, I would like to ask the conservation department and the engineering department to give us a formal review and response as to whether there could be an underground spring or piped water course on this property. The reason is, this is in the Rooster River watershed. I had some research that I did a few years ago on another application. It's, the whole watershed was overdeveloped over the last hundred years. And there are many, many streams and tributaries to the Rooster River, which it becomes Ash Creek, which is a very impaired and very important estuarian water body. Um, if there is a piped water course in, on this property, I want to know that it exists now. I don't want to find out later. I don't want it to be a beacon square situation where later on somebody says, oh, yeah, we're wrong. There is a water course here. If there is one, we need to know that it's there. I'd like to ask the conservation department and the engineering department because engineering deals with pipes, conservation deals with water. I would like both to render us an opinion on that.
Well, they're both, they're both a, our town agency, agents, agencies, departments. I believe we can make that request, right, Mr. Mr. Wentz?
We can, Mr. Chairman. And I will say that, um, I've, I've already had, um, some extensive conversations with the conservation staff about this because of the emails that you've all received. And they don't have any record of any, um, pipe water course or underground stream there, but we can certainly confirm that, um, in, via email, um, to supplement this record.
I think they could research back on various applications that might have happened, which might have uncovered, uh, springs. When you look at the wetlands map and the USGS map, there's a whole Rooster River watershed study done by the DEEP. There's all kinds of pieces of water all over the place that disappear because they go underground.
I guess that the, the basis for that opinion was on, um, notes from prior applications, but I'm happy to confirm that to supplement this record.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, I mean, I just thank you so much. I don't mean to belabor this tonight. I know it's getting late, but if we could get, you know, a fairly decent memo from him, that would be really helpful. I think some of the memos I've seen from like the fire department have not been very thorough. It's been like yes, no. So if we could push our colleagues on the conservation commission or agency to provide a thorough memo, that would be really helpful, I think, for all of us. Um, you know, water is really important to all of us. So I would, again, agree with Commissioner Braun on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? So with that, uh, we'll, I'll close the, uh, hearing on this matter and this being the last, uh, matter of the meeting, I'll close the pub, um, excuse me, I will close the meeting.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Have a good evening. Bye.